For the order, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Bokey?
Present.
Councilmember Branstadter?
Here.
Councilmember Farmer?
Here.
Councilmember Moss?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Whalen? I am promoting Deputy Mayor Whalen on screen now, who's joined us, and Mayor Anderson?
Here.
You have a forum?
Thank you. We will now move right into proclamations and presentations. The first proclamation is declaring the month of October as Healthcare Heroes Month. We have representatives hopefully from MultiCare, TG, and Premier Health, Virginia Mason, St. Joe's, if we could queue up those who are in attendance, recognize them. And Mr. Bokey will present the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. This proclamation, whereas the worldwide COVID-19 pandemic and its progression continues to threaten lives and the health of our community as we experience an alarming increase in confirmed cases and hospitalizations contributing to limited availability of beds at our local hospitals. And whereas, as we work through the second year of the COVID-19 pandemic, the need for widespread vaccinations is critical as new variations of the virus take hold. And whereas, those who have chosen the healthcare profession as their calling serve their patients with great expertise and compassion. And whereas, the unified vision to protect life is embraced within our healthcare organizations from the housekeeping, janitorial, and support staff to the emergency medical technicians, nurses, doctors, and respiratory therapists. And whereas, the sick of our community, whether afflicted with COVID-19 or suffering with another illness, are treated and cared for by our devoted healthcare professionals, first responders, and caregivers who continue to dedicate themselves to alleviating pain and suffering of patients while risking their own lives and the well-being of their families. And whereas, the responsibility, dedication, and fortitude of these devoted individuals to continue administering services in the face of danger and uncertainty serves as an inspiration to all. Now therefore be resolved that the Lakewood City Council hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 as Healthcare Heroes Month and urges all residents to offer their heartfelt gratitude and support to our healthcare professionals for their commitment and sacrifice to continue caring for the sick during this difficult time. Proclaim this fourth day of October 2021, Don Anderson, Mayor.
Thank you. Now I'd like to give an opportunity to other representatives who are here tonight to say a couple of words if they want to. Linda Alderson of MultiCare?
Thank you. I apologize, my video is not working tonight, but I just want to thank the council and Mayor Anderson for recognizing our healthcare teams. With this proclamation, I'm proud to be able to represent Tacoma General, Allenmore Hospital, even Mary Bridge Hospitals, and the healthcare team members in accepting your recognition of their contribution and the sacrifices they give daily. Honestly, this has been a very challenging and many days exhausting eighteen months of this pandemic. And in the eyes of our healthcare workers, a pandemic that doesn't appear to be subsiding. As many of you are aware, hospitals have been operating above capacity even long before this latest outbreak. And we are experiencing more and more labor shortages similar to our, our community businesses. That really adds to the stress for our teams. Your leadership policies and encouragements are welcomed as the teams continue this battle on the front line. From our housekeepers to our nursing teams who are here every day with our patients, we're grateful for your support. The degree of stress, the team space daily is real. And your support and the community's support really brings us a lot of hope. So for all the teams at MultiCare Health System, we thank you very much for this recognition and proclamation.
Thank you. And we have Sean Fisher representing St. Joseph's Medical Center and Virginia Mason-Francois Health System.
Hi there. I'm a nurse at St. Joseph's in Tacoma, and I do want to thank all of you for this proclamation and recognition. It truly has been a difficult and challenging year, but it's also shown the resilience of the, all the healthcare workers and the patients. We've all gone through this struggle and hopefully we are kind of getting towards the end of it. But thank you very much. It's definitely been a team effort.
And also, we have Josh Dunn from Premier Media representing the Tacoma Pierce County Chamber and Economic Development Board.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand the rest of the wonderful leaders here in the awesome city of Lakewood. Just want to say thank you for this chance to just declare that this is a month for our healthcare heroes. We have launched a soundheroes.org website. And our intent is to look for ways to fund and support our healthcare heroes. Twenty-five dollars can feed three frontline workers immediately. So we're just excited with our Pierce County Council, the rest of our amazing cities, and obviously our beautiful here in the city of Lakewood, just looking for ways for all of us to support these amazing heroes saving our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, we'd like to thank all of you. Any other council members wish to say anything on this proclamation? See, I saw Mr. Whalen's fidget there.
I just want to thank the first-line workers and healthcare providers. It's been a long slog for all of us. And you have Sean and your team have borne the brunt of it for all of us. And so we really appreciate what all you have done and continue to do for our communities. So thank you.
And I, I'd like to say that while it may seem trivial some, I think you, I hope you take this as a heartfelt expression of our continued thanks, recognizing the, the longtime grind that the healthcare workers have, have been in and, and the fatigue that sets in. And while it may seem to be a small gesture to provide meals to, to folks who aren't going to go hungry, I can tell you from my personal family experience, I have a a daughter who works for Pial Tribal Healthcare as a provider and meals coming over to, to help them out or cheer them up are greatly appreciated. It's, do you know what happened today? So I think it's a great idea and hopefully the community will back the effort up. So thanks again. We now move to a proclamation declaring September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one to October fifteenth, twenty twenty-one as National Hispanic Heritage Month. And for this, we have Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very, very proud to be reading this proclamation. So whereas, National Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month celebrates the Hispanic and Latino community and highlights its countless achievements. And whereas, the observation began in nineteen sixty-eight under President Lyndon B. Johnson and was enacted into federal law on August seventeenth, nineteen eighty-eight, calling upon all people of the United States to observe this time with ceremonies, activities, and programs. And whereas, September fifteenth through October fifteenth is recognized as National Hispanic Heritage Month, which is a time to honor the invaluable ways Hispanics and Latinos contribute to our common goals, celebrate their diverse cultures, and to work towards a stronger, more inclusive, and more prosperous society for all. And whereas Hispanics and Latinos have enhanced and shaped our national character with centuries-old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of their communities while adding their own distinct and dynamic perspectives to the story of our country. And whereas, Hispanic and Latino Americans represent a significant and fast-growing demographic of the city of Lakewood, we honor the invaluable ways they contribute to our great city. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lakewood City Council hereby proclaims September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one through October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one as National Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Lakewood and encourages our community to join us in celebrating the great contributions of Hispanics and Latino Americans to our city, state, and nation. Proclaim this fourth day of October, two thousand twenty-one, Mayor Don Anderson.
Thank you. Kind of virtual applause. And I think it's very significant that the recent census shows the Hispanic population of the city of Lakewood is proportionally increasing. And we see a good deal of, of business activity that, from that community, including one that was recently video featured. So thanks again, Councilmember Bell, for reading that. We'll now move to a proclamation declaring the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I'd like to ask City Prosecutor Samantha Johnson to join us. Or is it going to be Eileen?
Mayor Anderson, Ms. Johnson will be joining us this evening.
Okay. So welcome.
Thank you.
So whereas, the city of Lakewood believes that domestic violence in all forms, whether involving assaults, threats, dating violence, stalking, violation of protection orders, or other matters of violence negatively impacts individuals, families, and the community. And whereas, the city of Lakewood understands that in particular, the adverse impacts on a child who is present witnesses or is aware of domestic violence in the home or in the family can be both immediate and long-term lifelong. And whereas, the city of Lakewood recognizes that the persistence of domestic violence is about more than relationship problems or family issues. Rather, it is an issue that comes, carries both immediate and long-term adverse effects for the victims, families, schools, and workplaces that can last for generations, as well as for the first responders, the criminal justice system, and domestic violence advocates and service providers. And whereas, from January one, twenty twenty-one through July thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, the city of Lakewood Legal Department, on behalf of the residents of Lakewood, DuPont, and Stillicum filed two hundred and seventy-one domestic violence cases, an average of about twenty, thirty-eight cases filed per month, and twenty-six cases of exposing a minor child to domestic violence. While recognizing that these figures reflect only crimes that have been reported, and they are likely well below the actual occurrence rate. And whereas, in an effort to not only hold violent members of the society accountable for acts of domestic violence, but also in an effort to provide assistance to victims and families exposed to domestic violence, the city of Lakewood remains committed to a collaborative effort between law enforcement and prosecution, as well as o- other entities, both civilian and military, providing support and advocacy for domestic violence victims and their families, ensuring those individuals receive support, assistance, and information to educate, protect, and ultimately reduce and eliminate acts of domestic violence. Now therefore, the city of Lakewood Council hereby proclaims October twenty twenty-one as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. In the city of Lakewood, it urges all residents to join us in recognizing domestic violence as a crime with impact on individuals, families, and our community, with the ultimate goal of educating, protecting, and ultimately reducing and eliminating acts of domestic violence. Proclaim this fourth day of October, twenty twenty-one, Don Anderson, Mayor. Now I'd like to invite Samantha Johnson from our legal department to, is on point on this issue, to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I appreciate you guys recognizing the importance of this month and proclaiming it. Just briefly, the legal department has recently been looking at our systems and seeing ways that we can improve our resources and accesses, access to our victims. In July, we filled our stop grant position with a legal assistant, and she hit the ground running. She went and visited the Crystal Judson Center, learned of all the different resources that are out there in Lakewood. And we were able to bring that information in-house and restructure our letters that are going out to these victims. So working with Jim and our communications department, we have simplified the language in some of our letters to help reach a larger audience and make that information more digestible for them. In addition, we are going to be sending the, out these letters for translation to meet our Korean population, Hispanic population, that's primarily Spanish-speaking, and Russian population. We found that we have a vast diversity of victims. Obviously, domestic violence doesn't pick any race, gender, ethnicity. It goes after everybody. So we want to make sure we're reaching everyone and giving them the resources that are available in their community. Jim is working with our facilities to light up City Hall purple this month to get different lighting to show the community that we do stand behind this proclamation to eliminate domestic violence in our community and to help bring resources to different people in our community. And just one additional thing, a way that we were able to harness resources we already had in-house instead of asking for more money, we have a phone that's designated phone for our domestic violence contact person, and we are now offering that number through text message. We found a lot of victims don't have minutes on their phone to speak to us, but they are easily able to communicate via text message and email. And additionally, for intimate partner violence, we are going to be providing prepaid postage for them to send information back to us. So we're trying to eliminate barriers for access to justice. We appreciate the city councils standing behind the city and ensuring that domestic violence does not affect anyone in our community. So thank you.
Thank you. We'll keep up the good work and we hate to see that volume, but we know it's not everything. So there's plenty of work to be done and thanks for all your efforts. We'll now move to an update on the Point Defiance bypass route. And for this, we have Mr. Andrew Austin of Sound Transit.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having us here. I'm going to share my screen. That's possible. There it is. Can you all see that? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks for having us back. We are happy to give you all an update on the Point Defiance bypass today. I think it's been just over a year since we presented to you all. We, I am joined, my name's Andrew Austin, Government Affairs Manager for Sound Transit. And members of the Sound Transit team are going to give you an overview in terms of where we're at with the process and, and the procedures and the timeline for resumption of service. So that will be our Chief Safety Officer, David Wright, and our Rail Activation Manager, Anna Huntington. And then we're also joined by members of WashDOT and Amtrak tonight to cover some additional pieces of information in terms of what service would look like when it comes back on the bypass and some safety messaging that we'll be using in the months ahead. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Anna to jump into the presentation. And of course, happy to take questions as we get through this presentation. And I'll turn it over to you.
Great. Thanks, Andrew. So here's a high-level overview of where we've been. So the Point Defiance Bypass Resumption of Amtrak Passenger Service project was separated into three phases, which aligned to Sound Transit's standard activation process. We, we've successfully completed the systems integration testing phase and the crew qualification and simulated service phase. Sound Transit internal audit has been engaged throughout the project, adding an additional layer of oversight. And between each phase, we've briefed Sound Transit leadership on project progress and demonstrated readiness to move into the next project phase. Last week, we received authorization from Sound Transit CEO Peter Rogoff to continue to progress the project into next steps, which include coordination with the FRA on final document review and working with WashDOT and Amtrak to coordinate a resumption of service date for Amtrak passenger service to return to the bypass. And with that, I will pass it over to David Wright.
Thank you, Anna. Since the initial launch, Sound Transit has added additional safety measures to the alignment. Early enhancements included working with BNSF to ensure that PTC is operational along the corridor. We've also worked with tenants to ensure that equipment is PTC-equipped and proven to be interoperational. We implemented a step-down speed prior to the curve, seventy-nine to fifty to thirty miles per hour prior to the curve, which meets the standard recommended by the FRA in the FAST Act. An advanced warning sign has been implemented prior to the new fifty mile per hour speed restriction. Prior to crew qualif- the crew qualification phase, the team successfully completed systems integrated testing. We verified operator sightlines and wayside signs, signals and signage. We retested functionality of waysize signals and crossing systems. We also implemented a PTC cutout protocol that's more conservative than the FRA standard. Our cutout protocol limits all train speeds, passenger and freight, to thirty miles per hour if PTC is not active. Here's an example scenario. If a train's PTC were to cut out while the train is operating on a twenty miles of track that we own, PTC is designed to automatically apply brakes to the train until it comes to a standstill. The operator would then be required to communicate with dispatch for permission to proceed without PTC engagement. At that time, the operator would know from training and from the timetable that the max, maximum allowable speed on the corridor without PTC is thirty miles per hour. Operations and engineering have coordinated on procedures and reports to PTC or monitor PTC reliability and have committed to reviewing this proto- protocol after a year of Amtrak service and data on the corridor. Next slide. During the crew qualification phase, Sound Transit has been actively involved in monitoring Amtrak's familiarization training program. Before going out in the field, train engineers and supervisors were trained on Amtrak simulator, followed by the engineers. This provided a simulation of the territory, complete with elevation changes, speed restrictions, landmarks, and is also used to test responses to exceptions along with safe train handling procedures. The train engineers were required to complete six round trips on the territory prior to being certified. Amtrak was able to qualify seventy-one total employees, including twenty-three engineers, thirty-eight conductors, and ten managers. Overall, training went well with no issues or concerns to report with the training, equipment, or track and signal systems. PTC was required to be active during the training, and there were no PTC issues reported. The team verified the training records are complete for each crew member. All records were additionally reviewed by safety and an internal audit. Additionally, Amtrak conducted simulated service, the purpose of which is to initiate actual operating conditions per the schedule. The operations team was paying close attention to the impact of speed changes to overall travel time on the corridor. Amtrak completed eight end-to-end runs using all equipment types that they planned to operate on the bypass. They were able to operate within the limits detailed in our service outcomes agreement as expected. Sound Transit's emergency management team has been closely coordinated with Amtrak to provide first responder training in advance of Amtrak returning to the bypass. The team has offered classroom-style training and hands-on familiarization training, of which the equipment types Amtrak plans to operate. Additionally, Sound Transit worked with BNSF and Amtrak to update the Joint Passenger Train Emergency Preparedness Plan and co-hosted a tabletop exercise with Amtrak. The Sounder operations team has also made significant updates to the division's contractor oversight plan, updating Sound Transit's monitoring activities of the subdivision tenants. Some examples of the updates include new procedures for tenants to notify Sound Transit if they plan to operate new equipment types on the bypass, updated training oversight procedures and document requirements of both tenants and maintenance-of-way contractors. And as we mentioned in the previous slide, we've also updated procedures to reflect increased coordination with engineering and tenants on oversight of PTC reliability. Next slide. There were thirty total recommendations in the NTSB report, of which three were assigned to Sound Transit. For the other recommendations, which are, which we are not the owner of, we've broken them into two categories. Those that were assigned to the federal entities and those that were assigned to state entities. For the recommendations that were assigned to Sound Transit, we established requirements that addressed each recommendation. All requirements have been completed. For all recommendations applied to federal entities, our requirements for each general look, for each generally looked the same with a, with a documented, with a document, looked the same with a document. We document our commitment to monitor the federal regulation updates, and we recorded monitoring activities in the oversight plan and have committed to organizing, organizing an annual check-in meeting with the FRA to exchange updates. For all recommendations applied to state entities, Sound Transit developed actionable items to each recommendation, and will continue to monitor each entity's response to NTSB closure. If you have any specific questions or recommendations, we can dive into them at future meetings or follow up with you via email after the meeting to discuss. Next slide.
Can you see that, David?
Yes, you, it's you.
Okay, great. And just to clarify a couple of terms there. So PTC is Positive Train Control, which we talked about at the last meeting, and the FRA is the Federal Railroad Administration. So here's our resumption of service timeline that we're looking at right now. So as Anna mentioned, we, we have, we got internal Sound Transit go-ahead from our CEO to really give the, start the process for resumption of service because of all of the good work that you just heard about. And that includes the, the crew qualification and simulated service and our internal safety certification. So right now, we're looking at, depending on the timing of the rest of the approvals with our partners, including our federal partners of the FRA, the Federal Railroad Administration, the, there's a possibility that we could resume service in November, prior to Thanksgiving. As you'll recall, there's a blackout period between Thanksgiving and the end of the year. So, and we also have mandated time for community outreach, public, public notifications, public service, and safety messaging that'll go out that all the cities in the corridor have been really helpful in pushing out throughout the previous phases of this project. So there's a minimum timeframe of public messaging between a go decision, a final go decision from all of our partners, and when, when service would actually resume. So if, if we are able to get all those approvals, there's still a possibility that we would go out this November. If that doesn't happen, we, we wouldn't start service the blackout period, and then we'd be looking at the first quarter of next year. So those are kind of the two phases of time that we're looking at. So happy to take questions on that. Might be easier to hold them to the end. I want to turn it over to Rob Eaton, who's here from Amtrak Government Affairs, just to give some updates on the Amtrak side.
And let's, we'll hold questions until all the presenters have had their turn.
Thanks, Andrew. Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Rob Eaton with Amtrak. Just want to follow up on what David was reporting on and add a little bit to it. As you know, as we mentioned, positive train control, PTC has been implemented. Amtrak has also implemented a system management's, safety management system, an SMS system that's industry-leading for the railroad. We also made some changes to, significant improvements to our data management system for efficiency testing, operational efficiency testing that will be able to catch some safety trends as we report our safety procedures throughout our crews. We have expanded our safety metrics. We have expanded our safety metrics to have more comprehensive picture of our operational safety and what we're reporting in terms of, uh, safety incidents. We also have done a new, um, route qualification protocol for engineers and the crews, how we train them, how we evaluate them and how they're qualified on the territory. And David mentioned some of those qualifications for the point defiance bypass. This is a system-wide, enterprise-wide improvement and standardization for all new routes in the country. We also redesigned, uh, our extensive sixty, uh, training courses. We have, um, online training courses and as well as in-person training courses. We revamped over sixty of those courses for our operational workers. Uh, and then finally, we have also, uh, invested in not only, uh, systems but people to have oversight of these changes and making sure that there's compliance to the new procedures and policies, uh, for the operating department. Uh, next slide, please. Um, and there's a typo on that first one, so it's not two weeks, it's thirty days. But as mentioned earlier, there's two, two phases of system integration and crew qualifications. The multidisciplinary team that did communications, that was Sound Transit, WashDOT and Amtrak use a number of, um, social media channels and, uh, media channels for safety messaging around the time for system integration, crew qualifications, and also now we'll do it, once we get the go of a date, we'll do a thirty-day window prior to, uh, resumption of service. We'll be using social media, as I said, safety videos, email messaging, media statements, VMS signs, which will go out at the intersections two weeks before, uh, start of service. And of course, digital flyers. So this is exactly what we've done two times, uh, previous. Next slide, please. So a little bit more about our safety awareness and messaging. Basically, we're going to advise the communities about train operations and solely here, this messaging is on safety and the tracks. We'll push it through Amtrak, Facebook and Instagram. Additional posts would be by Sound Transit and WashDOT. Uh, and the messaging overall is pay attention, this train activity on the tracks along the point defiance bypass. Um, and it does point to, all the media points to stay back from the tracks, uh, dot com, which is the website that we've, that the state has put up. It'll also be followed with email blasts, uh, to the listservs. Like I said, vis, visual messaging signs, uh, at the intersections, um, along the right, right away. Our school districts, um, the school districts in your area through Peachtree R software will be blast out electronic flyers, letting people know that we're going back and the safety messaging, uh, along, it's important to stay away from the tracks at each of the stations. We have A-frame boards during the testing phase, the crew qualification, where we will repurpose those A-frame boards and have, uh, A-frames at the platforms, letting people know that that service is resuming and there'll be train activity. And then again, finally, everything there'll be, we'll push out, goes back to stay back from the tracks website. So it's a third, third run of what we've done very successfully to the communities, uh, prior, uh, last, in the last year.
Thanks, Rob. And, uh, to, uh, wrap up, I'm going to hand it over to Ron Pete, uh, with Rush, WashDOT Rail. Go ahead, Ron.
Yeah, thank you, Andrew. Uh, Mayor Anderson and, uh, city council members, thanks for having us tonight. I want to give you an update on schedules and train equipment. So if you go to the next slide, Andrew. Yeah, train schedules. Uh, currently, there's, uh, six daily count, Amtrak Cascade trains and two long-distance trains running on the waterfront route. That is not on the bypass, as we all know. We are working to slowly add service back as demand increases. As everyone knows, uh, at the city council, COVID is certainly taking, uh, a rage against what we normally do in our travel and our business. So we're working to do that based on demand. And then ultimately, fourteen daily round trips will be on the bypass between seven AM and ten PM. Next slide, Andrew. You all will probably remember from the NTSB, uh, report, uh, they had recommended retiring the Talgo Series Six trains. WashDOT has discontinued and Amtrak has discontinued the use of those trains as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty. They are no longer going to be put in service on the route. Oregon does have two Series Eight trains that are still in service on the route. Those are a different model train than, uh, was involved in the derailment. Uh, Amtrak-owned equipment right now is being used to supplement the fleet. We are washed out with many other states around the country are working to, uh, as part of a national procurement. And that contract for, uh, procurement is underway. Siemens was the vendor that got the contract and the equipment for the new services across the country. And our service is expected to start delivery in twenty twenty-five. Washed out will be the first to get the new equipment that you will see running on the corridor and on the bypass. And next slide, Andrew, I think that's pretty much it. And I would turn it back to you, Andrew, to coordinate any questions for the group. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. So that's our presentation, but we're happy to take questions and I'll stop sharing, but if you'd like me to pull anything up, just let me know.
It helps, uh, questions for the presenters. Look at it. Mr. Whalen.
Thank you. I, I want to start by saying thank you for presenting and, uh, speaking with us. As you know, we've had a relationship together on this route. And so it's much appreciated to have you come back. My question on the equipment changeout, with the new equipment coming onboard in twenty twenty-five, how does that impact, if any, uh, if any way, the safety, uh, standards that have been promulgated for the reopening of the bypass route?
Yeah, I can take that from the procurement perspective that I know I've been working with Amtrak. Amtrak's leading that national procurement, so that equipment will have to meet all safety certifications from the FRA. Make, it'll have to operate with PTC just like everything else. There should not be any changes, uh, with that equipment. I'm sure Rob can add more as Amtrak.
But until we get there, Ron, the equipment that's currently going to service the route will be obviously up to the standard?
Yes, yes, yeah. All the Amtrak equipment, uh, is certified as part of the process. And I know Amtrak, Rob can talk about this. When they did the testing on the quarter and the crew qualifications, they looked at equipment as well. Rob, did you want to talk about that? You froze up for a minute.
Sorry about that. No, you, uh, actually hit the nail right on the head, Ron. Nothing else to add.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Bransheder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and thank you to everyone, uh, in the panel who is, uh, come and given us this, uh, briefing this evening. I know it's been something that is, uh, been important in the community and, and while there's been a period of time of when there hasn't been a lot of information going on, I'm sure that interest is going to peak the closer we get to trains resuming. Mr. Wright, what, could you expound a little bit on the, the FRA readiness review? That's sort of the next step uh, in the process or, or is one of the pieces that has to be done? Is that something that is, uh, significant or is it something kind of pro forma?
So let me, let me jump in on this one and then David, you can, you can add on. So the, the, what we're, what the FRA is doing now is part of their normal review, looking at basically reviewing all of our, uh, documentation and our plans for resumption of service. So to put it on a scale of, of your question, maybe I'd say it's somewhere in between. Uh, it is significant. It is important. We want the FRA's full buy-in. So it's not pro forma, um, but, but also we're confident, um, whether it's, you know, in the next, next short term and we're, and a, and a closer resumption of service or, or early next year, we're confident that, um, it's, it's, uh, we have all the information that they're asking for. So it's somewhere in between. And just part of their, their normal review. David, do you want to add on?
I, I mean, I think you know, it's part of their review and, um, we, we have everything that they're asking for, so.
Yeah, and, and they've been involved with this process since, you know, the, the resumption of service process since the beginning, you know, going back a couple of years too.
So is this type of review unique to, uh, initiating, uh, service on a route? Or is it something that is done periodically on all routes?
It's tied to, um, re, either starting new service or resuming service on a route. If that, if that makes sense, yeah.
Oh, okay, uh, that, that's fine. And, uh, the, 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 the step down of speed of, from the, seventy-nine to fifty to thirty, actually, what's the distance that that? I understand that there's, there, 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 there are signs at those intervals, but what's the, the actual distance leading into the curve from the two directions? Down takes place.
Yeah, also, um, I, I was remiss to introduce them in the beginning, but also on the line here is Robin Brazel, who's our, Director of Commuter Rail, who's been involved in this. Robin, do you want to, um, jump in on that one and then others can comment as well?
Sure, um, I'll, I'll take a shot at it. The, the step-down speeds prior to the Lakewood Station are about four tenths of a mile prior to the Lakewood Station on the north and about six tenths of a mile on the south side of the Lakewood Station. If we're talking about the thirty mile or the drop-down speed prior to the, uh, the curve that, uh, involved the accident, I don't, I don't know if I know the number of feet, um, but I do know that the, the advanced warning sign is two miles prior to each speed reduction. So when it goes from seventy-nine to fifty, the, the advanced warning is two miles prior. And when it goes to, uh, from fifty to thirty, it's also two miles prior. And that's chosen because that's consistent with the other four hundred and whatever it is, four hundred and sixty-something miles of the, uh, of, of the travel distance. So our twenty miles of, of, uh, property is consistent with the operating practices throughout that, that, that territory.
So, so then I could, could understand is that the, uh, the reduction down to thirty miles an hour going through the curve, which is down in DuPont, uh, or slightly past DuPont, that, um, the reduction from seventy-nine begins after the train has passed through Lakewood. Would that be right? So that, that, that step down isn't affected the speed of trains in Lakewood?
Yes, sir. That's, that's correct. That's correct. Yeah, we are out of the Lakewood city limits before we, uh, before we get anywhere near that curve.
And we'd be happy to.
But, but I guess I say that you mentioned that there was a some step down in speeds on either side of the Lakewood Station. And is that true even for the trains that are not stopping there, like the Amtrak train?
That's correct. That's correct. Those are, those are permanent speed restrictions, um, in that territory. There's about one mile near the Lakewood Station, a little bit before and a little bit after. That is a, a restricted or reduced speed, uh, under seventy-nine miles an hour.
Okay, and, and so, and, uh, probably the, then the, the public would be interested, because seventy-nine was a scary number, would be interested in knowing that trains are going to slow down and then speed up and so that the speed might be important to add into some public outreach things rather than just talking about seventy-nine. And then I guess my last question, uh, is for, 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 uh, Mr. Eaton, in your discussion about the rather robust public outreach, uh, but, uh, you didn't mention anything about what would be done in the languages other than English.
Right now, we are, we've been doing it in English. If there's a specific, I understood from your earlier parts of your council meeting, Korean and Spanish is particular in the Lakewood community?
Well, well, we, we certainly have a, a, a growing and significant Hispanic, uh, population and a portion of that, yeah, are, are folks who live in homes where Spanish is the, i- 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 is the language. Particularly for, perhaps for some older, uh, folks.
We did have.
And I, 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 I would, I'm less concerned about Korean. That, uh, although my wife may have hit me over the head with a frying pan for saying that, but.
We do have it in Spanish as well. I recall that and, uh, thanks Janet Mack and she proud of me and said we did translate to Spanish too, so. We do have an English and Spanish for going out to the schools and, uh, and make communications.
Okay, well, uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I greatly appreciate all of the work that has been done over the two years. To really, I think, do the resumption or the assumption of service, uh, in a, in a way that, uh, the public can have competent, its confidence in. And, uh, so I, uh, you know, I certainly appreciate the, the many folks who would have had a hand in this, both in the terms of, of, of training and, and even in, in, in the deciding what needed to be done and checked. So thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Moss.
Mr. Mayor, and thank you, uh, gentlemen, for the report. I was listening to Mr. Wright and he talked about the equipment. And my question is, is the technology on the trains equipped to let you know when a problem is happening or going to happen before it actually just shuts down?
Think I'll, I'll let Robin give a, a better answer that I can follow up.
Sure, um, yes, ma'am. The, uh, with, with positive train control, if you are, uh, if you are exceeding the speed you should to be able to slow down appropriately, it will, it will alert you. Um, and if you don't respond, uh, quickly, it will, it will shut you down. And so it does give the engineer some level of alert, uh, to, to notify them.
So it won't just shut down and you don't know that there's a problem even in the making?
Right, that's correct. You'll, you'll know that it is. And, and frankly, most of the engineers, uh, if, if they hear the alert, they, they, they realize very quickly that they, they need to be attentive to that issue and, uh, and, and it doesn't go away until it shuts you down or until you respond to it and, uh, reduce your speed or take, take the, uh, correct action.
Great, thank you. Also, when you were talking about the signage, will the, the railroad signs, would they also be in different languages? Like the crossings and speed limits and all the things that people that don't speak the English would be able to understand?
The, the signage on the alignments for the trains is, 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 uh, all in English because that is required for the engineers to be able to operate. Um, and, and generally, they're, they're now, they're numbers, so they're not, uh, but the other signage is in English, but all the engineers are required to, to speak and read English to, to be employed. Uh, Amtrak could speak more to that, but I would just say in general, that's, that's the requirement. Uh, when it comes to signage on the streets, then that's, that's regulated through, uh, other means, but, um, for the railroad, they're all consistently in English for the, uh, the engineers or the trains.
But there are others that will make sure that those signs are available to the people that don't speak English? Is that what you're saying?
I'm, what I'm saying is that the, the signage on the railroad tracks for the train engineers is specifically for them, not for the public. So it's specifically for their operating, uh, requirements, not for the public's needs.
But are there someone that will do it for the public?
The, the, shouldn't, the public, um, sorry, shouldn't ever, um, they shouldn't ever need to read those signs along the railroad right away because it's specifically giving information to the engineers driving the trains, basically. So, um, the signs in terms of the signs at the cross- the signs at the crossings, uh, Anna or David could speak more to this, but those are, you know, regulated by state and federal guidelines around what railroad crossing signs look like, and they tend to have a lot of um, visual identifiers in addition to letters and and English intentionally, so that's that's pretty standard across the state and country.
Okay, that's what I was looking for, to be sure that they would be able to. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions from council? Well, I'd like to thank the presenters for uh, bringing us uh, up to speed and for uh in advance for the community outreach. I mean, it's no secret the city of Lakewood was opposed to this project. Uh, and it turned out to and we thought that at one point, maybe uh, it would be abandoned, uh but when the doubling down came, uh, I think we're fortunate that Sound Transit owns the tracks and has more than doubled down on uh, the safety requirements that uh, uh, you've been a leader in, I think, imposing. Uh, and we wish you the fifty years and ten ta- uh, ten billion passengers without a fatality that uh the Japanese bullet train has experienced. Uh, so thanks again, and we look forward to uh, assisting you and reaching all members of our community. Thanks.
Thanks for having us. Thanks a lot.
We now move to the Youth Council Report. So Madam Clerk, if you would queue up the Youth Council members who are in attendance tonight?
Uh, do I start?
Mayor Anderson, we have Angel Calderon, who will be joining us this evening as the Youth Council Representative.
All right, Angel Calderon. You're up.
Um, hi, I'm Angel Calderon. I'm from Clover Park High School. Um, today, in today's Youth Council meeting, we uh, had words of change presented uh, for what they did over the summer. Um, we had programs and youth activities that were proposed, um. We talked about what youth needed in Lakewood, what youth needs in Lakewood, and uh, we mentioned job fairs slash youth summit and like, um student aides and stuff like that. This.
So? Is that it?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Any questions for uh? Angel? Well, I know we are with some of our COVID money, looking at either individually or uh in concert with the uh with the county providing some additional opportunities for youth in the community, so so be tuned on that. That's a pretty fascinating and ever-changing subject. Uh, Mr. Bradstetter?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, um yeah, Mr. Calderon, um, that your uh colleague a month ago, um, mentioned to us that the uh Youth Council was considering how to uh get some membership from the high schools that were not represented in the original selection of members. Has there been any progress on that? Uh we've had usually three to five high schools represented, and and we started the year with only two, um. Is there any, is there any work being done or any progress in that regard?
Um, I, yes, actually, we've had a new, um so uh, someone who joined us from Lakes High School.
Okay, uh, uh thank you. I guess we'll get around to officially appointing him uh, here shortly then. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Well, thanks for joining us tonight. We appreciate the update.
Thank you for having us.
We now move to the Clover Park School District Report. For this, we have Board Member Paul Wagaman.
There are good, good evening, Mayor Anderson and uh, council members. Um, I'm pleased to give the report for Clover Park School District this evening. Um, as you know, school this, uh, school has started again. Um, we're back uh, full-time in person, but we also have the uh, option for people to um, do a virtual learning opportunity. Uh, again, we're trying to obey all the safety protocols that are recommended by uh, Pierce County Health Department and the State Health Department and doing all that stuff, um. We're also working all of the mental health issues and support the social emotional issues that come about because of all the COVID issues and not being in school and not being in person, but trying to make sure all that stuff's done, so again, so school's back in session. The um interesting thing, Clover Park High School put a mural up. Some of you may have been there for that. I I was out of town, so I didn't get a chance to see that, but they they put a mural up, uh, and the mural's titled, "The World Lives in Lakewood" uh, celebrates the ethnic and cultural diversity that exists in the city of Lakewood by representing the various peoples who call the city home. So if you get a chance to go by Clover Park High School, that may be something of interest to each of you. Then, last month, in September thirteenth, uh, the board approved the equity policy update um, that was done, and uh, so that's all in place, and that probably goes along with your proclamation that you did on that uh, a month or so ago. Uh, Clover Park School District is still looking for substitutes uh, to cover uh, classroom uh, teaching responsibilities. Um, so if you have some people in that area, you know, we're also um have needs of uh, parent educators, custodians, and food service people, um, bus drivers in particular. So if you know anyone there, you know, the the whole world is looking for people to do work, so um, if people are interested in getting the education side, that we'd be happy to see those if they go to our website or to our HR department. Uh, we had two students that received the Elizabeth Wesley Youth Merit Incentive Awards, and um um, we had a student from Clover Park High School, Ernest uh, Belize, and Lakes High School, Jacqueline Tap. Um, they received those awards, so we're always encouraged when our students uh, excel and are recognized. Um, we have the Impact Aid, uh, and I know uh, Mayor Anderson has been involved with Impact Aid and helped us in that area. Uh, we'll be doing the surveys, which help us uh get those additional funds. Uh, if you're not familiar with Impact Aid, it's um, school districts that can't tax military bases, government housing, um, and those kinds of things. The government, the federal government, uh, provides funds to offset the loss of revenue due to um, no property tax there. Um, October is National Principals Month. So if you know any principals, uh, you know, they're key to making the education process work. Uh, we we have some excellent principals out there, so if you see one, um, give them an attaboy and encouragement. There's a program we have in place, it's called the the Golden Clover Card. So for those of us that are over sixty-five, and our our community can go to sporting events at uh in the Clover Park District, um, at no charge, and concerts and plays and those kind of things, so um if you're interested in seeing what students are doing, a- and you're a senior, here's a way to do it for a really a low-cost event. Um, free meals continue for all our students, those those that are in person that those are happening, and then if people choose to do the remote, they can go by the individual schools that their children are attached to and get free meals. Um, we also encourage people to like us on uh Twitter and Facebook and Instagram, so if you like those uh, social media events, it's a way we're trying to communicate with our citizens. And I think that's just about all I have to report this evening, so I'm available for questions if there are any.
Questions for Mr. Wagaman? I'm not seeing any, but so thank you for joining us tonight and bringing us up to speed.
You're welcome. Have a nice evening.
We now move to uh, public comments. Uh, public comments are uh, accepted by mail, email, or by live virtual comment. Send comments in advance by mail or email to Brianna Schumacher, City Clerk, at six thousand Main Street, southwest Lakewood, Washington, nine eight four nine nine, or B Schumacher at cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to one hour before the meeting have been provided to the City Council electronically. Uh, Madam Clerk, have we received uh some pre-meeting comments?
Mayor Anderson, we did not receive any public comments um, for the meeting this evening.
Okay, thank you. Uh, members of the audience may comment on items relating to any matter related to city business under its public comment period. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. There will be a timer uh, on the screen. With respect to these virtual comments, if you would like to provide virtual comments, you need to join the Zoom meeting as an attendee. You can do this by calling by telephone, dialing one two five three two one five eight seven eight two two, the number on the screen, and entering meeting ID eight six eight seven two six three two three seven three. Or visit zoom.us and enter meeting ID eight six eight seven two six three two three seven three. That same number that's on the screen. Upon entering the meeting, please enter your name or other chosen identifier and use the raise hand feature to be called upon. You will be unmuted, uh, and your name called, please uh, for your identifier, please give your name and city residence. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to speak. Uh, outside of the public comments, all attendees on Zoom will continue to have the ability to raise their hand in the tap uh, for the duration of the meeting. However, you will be not be acknowledged, your microphone will remain muted, except for the period of time when you're called on for public comment. So now we'll go through the folks who are signed in. Uh, first person uh, signing to speak is Linda Smith.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, good evening. How are you?
Great.
Linda Smith, um, I am a resident here in Lakewood, and um, I am calling uh, representing the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce. I was not able to chime in when you um, when you presented your proclamation uh, regarding Healthcare Workers Month, um, but I just wanted to let you know that the Economic Development Board and the Tacoma Pierce County Chamber did contact uh, several other chambers here in Pierce County, asking for our participation as well. Um, I did send you all an email uh, as a as a quick follow-up. Um, we have um talked to Cars Restaurant and Hong's Restaurant, and they are both going to be participating this year here in Lakewood and providing meals to our healthcare heroes. What I would like uh, to ask of our City Council members, um, knowing that you have nothing to do with your days and evenings, um, is to uh, step up and volunteer and help uh, pick up and deliver meals um, when we get our schedule in place. Um, and I would like to forward the schedule to you and and hope that you will um grab a shift or two and um, deliver to some of our healthcare workers. Um, so I'm not going to put you on the spot right now and ask for um, for you to raise your hand. Uh, but I did send you an email and ask uh, that you uh, respond to me. Let me know if you can make a little bit of time during the month of October uh, to uh thank our our healthcare workers and uh, go go with uh, bearing gifts, if you will, and make their make their lunchtime or or breakfast or or evening meal um uh, a little more enjoyable, so I hope that you will join us and uh, participate this month. And uh, not just this month, but this is going to be the special month because this is uh, when we're focusing on uh, getting uh these complimentary meals to our healthcare worker. So uh, on that note, I am done, unless you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
We now move to Dennis Haugen.
Now, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, Dennis Haugen here, and uh looking at uh, past meeting, uh, you're, or the time you're spending on the rescue page. If you're poor in this country and the Democrats want to help you, you better run. Because if you've been reading the news, the dollar stores now are having trouble with inflation. Where inflation, of course, is caused by the government trying to print money to keep up with its spending. So it's probably canceling itself out, but it will add some uh, government workers at different levels of government. And um, it was interesting to hear I really hate it when uh, people run our policeman down, but it was very interesting to hear that the man over by Burris had a gun in the car. And um it's time to stop abusing police and running the man down. I mean, that's uh, if the guy didn't hold his hands up, you know, he got only seconds to make decisions to save your own life. And you can go go beyond that to the reputation that you're getting in in the Puget Sound to the rest of the people in the United States is why can't you elect sufficient, sufficient? Not that everybody that is selected is incompetent, but why can't you elect sufficient competent people to deal with the mess? To deal with the riots? And to deal with all of the nonsense about defunding police? You're just scaring the rest of the country. Criminals have wheels and legs. And criminal the criminal community can grow because of the way Inslee particularly, and Jenny Durkin of Seattle are are reacting. The way the way it works is people outside the state start asking well, if they can't find competent leaders, what about the voters? Are they competent? Well, then you get back to the school system. You know, I've listened to those speeches about the school system for twenty-some years. And they never talk about the three hours and how well the people are doing and whether they're making progress from one point to another. No, they're teaching critical race theory. That's Marxism. So you need to get people on the school board, get the school back to education. Stop this nonsense that's going on at almost all levels of government, including the schools. Thank you.
Next up is Christina Minetti. Christina Minetti. Uh, we're hearing very little in the way of words and a lot in the way of static. Maybe if you get closer to the mic.
That's strange. Okay, well, I'll just go to the other computer. So, continue with the next.
Ms. Minetti, we can't hear you. Out of courtesy, I'd ask that you call back and sign in again, and we'll we'll ask uh, call your name later. call your name later in, in the public comments section, but you're not coming through. So we'll move to Julian Wheeler.
Hello, Mayor Anderson, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, that's too bad. Okay, where's the doomsday clock? There it is. Hi, I'm Julian Wheeler, Lakewood resident and Chair of the Pierce County Accessible Community Advisory Committee. I invite you to our next regular session Tuesday, November ninth at nine AM on Zoom. The county executive will proclaim October Disability History Month. And I would have asked the Lakewood City Council for that too, but since you already honored July as the ADA Anniversary Month, I didn't want to seem to be stalking you with incessant demands for proclamations. We support another event coming up. It's organized by Pave, Parents for Action, Voices for Empowerment. It is the online meeting DD Legislative Issues Forum on Tuesday, November sixteenth at six PM. I mentioned it's on Zoom and with today's Facebook, Facebook outage, I was concerned about whether we'd be able to hold it off, whether Zoom is next. Thankfully, that's not an issue anymore. Going beyond my role as Chair of the ACAC, I encourage voters to attend this Wednesday's Election Observer Training at Pierce County Elections. And it's ten AM or two PM, it's a trainee's choice. I think we all agree ballot handling and observing it are crucial to maintaining the integrity of and confidence in our system. Let me just add on a personal note, I survived my tender age years ravaged by domestic violence in my family. So I praise that proclamation that the city made. I want to thank, thank you, Patty Bell, not to be confused with Patty LaBelle, for reading the Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation. I am in fact descended from Mixtec and Aztec Indians as well as Spanish Basque and Sephardim who were deeply impacted by the A hundred decree of fourteen ninety-two. My Mexican ancestral family name is Sosado. Therefore also thank you, Don Mayor, Don Anderson, I'm using the courtesy title, you know, for reading that proclamation. And I just want to give a shout out to Deputy Mayor Waylon. You know, I always call you, I should call you Jason Waylon, but always on the verge of calling you Waylon Jennings. So I just want to thank you for your work and everyone else. I hope you're making frequent use of the F three search button on your keyboard. Finally, October thirty-one is Halloween, November second is Election Day. I look forward to each of you to show off your scary costumes for either occasion. Happy twenty-fifth birthday to Lakewood and to the organizers and thank you to the organizers for this last event at Motor Avenue Southwest this past weekend. And take care and be safe and hi to Linda Smith, everyone else. I'll get the rest of my time here.
Right. Next up is Addo.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So we're actually out here at City Hall. Wondering why you guys aren't, and that's okay. We know it's, it's COVID. But it kind of makes me wonder, maybe it's because you guys just don't like seeing us anymore. And that kind of hurts my feelings because we love seeing y'all. We love being able to look you guys in the eyes. Because as much as you guys might not think, we want you to be for the people. And that's what we're trying to push for. The gentleman said earlier that we were talking against the police. That's not what we're saying. We are not anti-police. We are anti-police corruption. We are pro-justice. They cut me. Did y'all cut me? Okay.
We can still hear you.
Oh, perfect. Because my clock went away. I can't see it anymore. Okay. Um, did you guys not want this recorded because I'm talking? So we, oh, perfect. Thank you. Thank you. I love having my voice recorded. Okay, so there's been a lot of talk about limiting public comment. Why would we do that? Why would we not want the people to speak? So that's all we're saying is please give us time so that we can talk to you, our representatives. Because you guys do represent us, you represent the community. And that's not a bad thing. We are just asking you to listen while you do it because it's the community that is here for the community and as the representatives of the community, shouldn't you represent us? So I know you guys can't answer that question and I know some of you guys have been very open to listening and we appreciate you. Whether you agree with us or not, you've been willing to listen. I'll say some of you guys more than others. With what little time I have left, I don't know where, what that might be. It looks like my clock might have restarted. Maybe y'all gave me extra time. I don't know why you would have done that. Because I can go all night. But what I'll say is when the Lakewood celebration happened, we were there. And I know that some of y'all know that because we saw you. And you could have joined us and said, hey, we understand what you're saying. We hear you. But instead, it was little sliding comments, the dropping of the sunglasses when you're standing in the shade and kind of slinking into the background. I think you guys know who you are that I might be talking to. I'm not going to call out any names because I know that you guys don't like that. But why not just come and talk to us? Why not join us and say, hey, let's look into this more. The investigation is done. Why has it not been put to prosecution yet? Why not let the people decide what should happen with Mike Wiley? Let him stand in front of a jury of his peers. Let that man be judged for the crime that he committed. Because that is the process. And as the people, that's the process that we have agreed upon. And as the representatives of the people, that is the process that you uphold. But why is that not being met? A child is dead. And we rally to get his name out there so that people didn't forget. And that's the one thing that I want you guys to remember. Whether you're here or not, we will always be here. We will make sure that people do not stop saying his name. All power to the people.
Next up is Kyle Jollyboy.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, we know why we're on Zoom. Because we've been showing up in Lakewood. I'm not even a Lakewood resident anymore. I left there in nine, in the nineties. But I have family, my mother still lives there. But we've been coming out to your place for weeks now. And in fact, your council tried to shut down my friend's grandchildren for speaking. That was not cool. So we're here now and I have your attention and you have mine. There's a lot going on in Lakewood. You guys are building warehouses and tearing down trees for no good reasons. Another thing I want you to be aware of is that Pierce County Sheriff Bed Troyer is still sheriff. I am the disabled man he targeted after he targeted Cedric Alltimer, the paper carrier. And justice has not been served in Pierce County. You want to talk about leadership, it's been talked about a lot in this meeting tonight. We need to stop, we need to start looking at the top officials that we have elected. We all know why Troyer was elected because he was the face of Pierce County for twenty years as their public spokesperson. We know that. But what legacy are you guys leaving in your name? Because a lot is happening on your watch in Lakewood and in Pierce County that will affect decades to come. We need your help. We elected you as our servants. I'm a disabled man afraid to be in Pierce County. Who do I call mayor? Do I call Pierce County Sheriff Bed Troyer? You know, it, all this growth that you guys are doing, only certain people are living off the hog of that. You got to think about the community because without the community, there is nothing. But if you open your eyes and open your ears, you'll hear that the community is here to work with you. We want you guys to thrive. We want our community to be the best they can be in Pierce County. But you have to start helping us as well. Got a lot on your plate, Mayor. Got an election coming up. Got to do better. I yield my time.
Next person signed up is Bunchy, Bunchy M O D.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Oh, that's good. Well, yes, my name is Bunchy, Bunchy Carter. I'm the Minister of Defense of the Black Panther Party of Washington. And I just want to say, it's not normally my, my way to get like perturbed about something I hear. But I heard some words earlier that, that rubbed me the wrong way. And I would like to address that right now. First and foremost, to the gentleman who appears to be older than dirt, who said that, who made it a point to point out that Said Joaquin had a gun in the car. If having a gun in the car is a reason to get murdered, then I probably should have been dead a long time ago. I know a whole lot of people who should. If you really want to do your research and do your homework on the case, then do that. But don't sully the reputation of a man who's not here to represent for himself and his family's not here to represent for him either. Especially when you're sullying this man's reputation against individuals who have been responsible for more deaths than just his. And like my brother Addo said, I don't like it when we call a name, so I won't call it. But I will say, I take that back. I will call one. Mr. Waylon, you remember back in March when we saw you at your house? And it could have went a whole different way. But it didn't because the Black Panther Party and the White Panther Party were on the scene. And we told you at that point in time, the money that you were planning on giving to the police, like they need anymore. You could just give it to the Black Panther Party. We take care of our people and nobody dies. See, the thing that y'all don't seem to understand is there's a need for a true bond between the community and the people who are tasked with protecting them. The people feel comfortable with us. If you could only see the look of terror in their eyes when police roll around the corner. But I'm pretty sure that y'all know that because that's what you want. Ever since their inception, the police have been nothing more than slave catchers. Well, I proudly announce to you today that I am not a slave. My brothers and sisters are not slaves. I don't see no plantations in Lakewood. And if I do, we know how to deal with that. But the reality is you on the City Council have to take your job of being the representatives of the people who put you in your positions more seriously. The people ain't out here defending killer cops, not the real people. The people aren't out here making excuses for why the Gary Oaks shouldn't be protected. Not the real people. See, when you understand that there's a fine line between poverty and crime and between having money and a severe lack of understanding, then you'll understand where I'm coming from. You should read the Ten Point Platform. It'll give you a real good idea of everything we're talking about. Said Joaquin, rest in peace. All power to the people.
Next person signed up is signed in is Exilee Inservio.
My name is Exilee Inservio. I am the Chief of Staff for the White Panther Party. And I have a lot of concerns about Lakewood right now. I'm a resident of Lakewood, Washington. So I am one of your constituents and one of your employers, one of the people that votes for you. And I have a lot of concerns about police brutality here in our city and the lack of accountability that is in place right now. Again, I also have a lot of concerns about how our mayor is elected by a body of his peers on the council instead of by the people that are here in Lakewood. And so one of the changes that I would like to see the council make is that this is something that has changed. The people need to be electing our mayor and our mayor needs to be responsible for the hiring and firing of Mark Zorro. We cannot abide by having a police chief that allows unsafe officers to interact with the public. Likewise, I would ask that the City Council start deferring public health monies to mental health agencies to be able to help folks just like Said Joaquin and other young people who have had interactions with law enforcement in recent months and years that have been murdered at the hands of law enforcement. I have worked internally with law enforcement in the past and it's because of the brutality and the blatant racism that I have witnessed that I have this stance. I'm asking that all of you start to make changes and work for people. And for one of your members that is currently sitting on the council, I want to ask you very poignantly, do your actions serving our city pass that four-way test? Because you've been a member of Rotary for years now. And I don't see that anything that you're doing is truthful. I don't see it being fair to all concerned. I don't see it building goodwill in our city or better friendships. It is not beneficial to all that are concerned. You work for us. Remember that on Election Day. I yield my time.
The next person signed up is James Dunlop.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is James Dunlop and I am a Lakewood resident. I want to make a public comment on public comments. Until recently, few people attended council meetings to make public comments. And it was often down to Amelia Escobedo and Shabon Ayuso to keep the fires of democracy and free speech burning. And of course, Dennis Hoigen, whatever we think of his politics, he seems to be almost always here and I applaud him for that. Yet things are changing. People are no longer prepared to accept the status quo and to trust elected officials to represent, officials to represent their interests. People want to be heard and they want to be listened to. In the case of Lakewood, there are wide concerns about environmental and social justice that people in power need to hear. Council members have seen this unfolding trend over the summer. And unsurprisingly, they're now discussing the reining in of public comments. Last week's council meeting, we had one council member appear to suggest that comment time be sometimes reduced to two or even one minute. And it was pointed out that the mayor has discretion on when to end the comments period. But what particularly upset some council members were comments being addressed to individual council members with the view that this was a breach of decorum. I would argue that council members don't have much to complain about. In comparison to what is happening in other parts of America, particularly at school board meetings, it's pretty civil here in Lakewood. One also has to ask whether it is too much to ask for the council to spend an extra hour or two every fortnight listening to the view of their constituents. This is particularly the case as council members are cut off from Lakewood voters. They have no direct connection with particular districts of the city. There are no town hall questions. There are no town hall question and answer sessions. And as far as I know, council members don't have regular times for their constituents to meet with them one-to-one, whether in person or through Zoom. Finally, council members should recognize that public comments are an important pressure valve. Cautel them at your peril. Thank you.
The next person signed up is General Owen I O X.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Magnanimous. So I definitely want to thank Mr. Dunlop for those eloquented words. As well, I wanted to come through and thank everybody that came out on the twenty-fifth anniversary to march with us through the middle of what should not have been happening at that point, as the city has yet to recognize the murder of our brother Said Joaquin. I do feel that the corruption of this Lakewood City Council needs to be observed. Maybe we should be looking into the mayor and the chief of police as they are allowing murderers, serial murderers, to remain on the force. As it is my freedom of speech to speak, and it is not against any law or rule, which you would have to actually mandate through a law, to speak freely. I'm going to speak freely. Thank you. Sorry, I'm having a hard time breathing through this purple mask that I'm wearing for our brother Said. Purple being his favorite color. Y'all probably didn't know that, as most of you, I'm sure, haven't even looked into the case. I do also want to speak out because these Gary Oak trees do need to be protected. So maybe you should do more research on that. I tuned in last week. I listened to what the man had to say about the trees. I agreed with parts. I disagreed with many others. With that, on All Devil's Night, October thirtieth, I would like to invite everybody that can hear me. And I will make it public so that others can. We are going to be having a nice little rally at one one five two zero Madeira Drive Southwest. And with that, I hope that everybody shows up. It's going to be beautiful. Lots of free food. We'll be feeding the homeless. You know, all power to the people. Say his name, Said Joaquin. And I'll go ahead and give my time for those at the phone.
So there isn't any time. I would caution you, general, that the address you referred to is on private property. It is not a public street. And it will be dealt with accordingly. Because your threat isn't anything more than a thinly veiled threat to try to intimidate someone who will not be intimidated. Last person signed up is Christina Minetti. If we can make contact with her this time.
Okay, does it work this time? Can you hear me?
Yes, it does. We can hear you.
Oh, good. I'm sorry. I don't know why that happened. So today, hello, everybody. I'd like to comment on two notable examples of city council members' comments recently that raised questions about their attitude towards their own constituents. During the city council study session on twenty-seventh of September, I was surprised and dismayed to hear Linda Farmer ask, what's special about a Gary Oak at one hour sixteen minutes forty seconds? This stunned me. How could someone ask that on the twenty-seventh of September, when the city had been hearing public comments about the Gary Oaks for the previous four months? Since June, including comments by experts in the field who explained time and time again why Gary Oaks are worth protecting and saving. The fact that Ms. Farmer asked this raises serious questions in the minds of constituents, those who care about this issue so much that they have devoted hours and hours of their time to present the council with information on the subject from different angles. If Ms. Farmer had asked the question in June, when the council hadn't heard so much about the Gary Oaks, I wouldn't be surprised. That would be excusable. But after four months of public testimony written and oral on the subject of Gary Oaks, if Ms. Farmer honestly still had no idea why Gary Oaks are special, she really should have taken upon herself to do a bit of research on her own long before the twenty-seventh of September. This leaves us wondering, are the council members really listening to us at all? Earlier in summer, I was asked by some experienced environmental advocates what the response from the city had been. And had anyone contacted me, what they had said, had they invited me for a meeting? I told them that the response from the city had been complete silence. And that is still true to this day, except for a nice meeting late in the summer with Mr. Bronstetter, arranged at the initiative of his tree-loving acquaintance. One would think that the council would have expressed an interest in talking to people who so much want to have the council's attention on a matter important to them. This would be especially logical, since the council members are not allowed to say anything to the people making the public comments. In addition, at the end of the last city council meeting on the twentieth of September, I was also surprised to hear the mayor recount what he had told me at his coffee with the mayor, challenging what I had said earlier during that meeting, saying that he had told me that he was in favor of nonprofits buying up wildlands for conservation purposes. This is absolutely not what he told me originally. If he had told me he advocates nonprofits buying up wildland for conservation purposes, I would have not been surprised in the least. What he told me was that private people should save up to buy pieces of Lakewood if they want to save the Oaks. I even asked a clarifying question, and he confirmed this is what he meant. There is no recording, unfortunately. He presented his version of what he said to the council when I had no chance to respond. I would request that the coffees with the mayor be recorded from now on to avoid such unpleasant situations in the future. Thanks a lot for the time. Thank you.
There's one more person who signed up, Jenna Lee.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, so my name is Jenna Lee. I am a resident of Seattle. So I'd like to discuss things I've heard about public comments as well. Firstly, I agree that the mayor should be elected by the people directly, not among his constituents. I think it more aptly reflects the desires and needs of the community as opposed to a smaller subset of people who don't necessarily represent all of Lakewood. I also don't think there should be a limit on lengths, as Mr. Dunlop stated. And I echo Christina Minetti's concerns about the lack of knowledge, quote unquote, that certain council members have about the Gary Oaks despite our just continual efforts to advocate on part of them and give you accurate information. So again, I am a resident of Seattle. I've never been a Lakewood resident. I've been a resident of University Place for a number of years, and I've visited Lakewood as I have friends there. And I heard that there was some desire in the council to limit who can speak in these discussions to people who immediately live in Lakewood. And I'd just like to tell you all that I'm a first-year law student at the University of Washington. This is a school night for me. I have a lot of stuff to do. And yet I still decide to show up here and take my time to listen to your, you know, youth council and listen to all the other members speak and listen to all of you. So I think it makes complete sense that even if you aren't a Lakewood resident, if you're participating in the going-ons of the city, which I believe I am, I should have full right to be able to speak. And that goes for anyone else who has some tie with Lakewood because we all have an interest in making sure this community is good for everyone. And the trees certainly are a part of that. Again, I emphasize my support for the Gary Oaks and advocacy for stronger protections against them. But I don't know if, I mean, law school is hard. This takes a lot of my time. And this is super important to me. So like, anyone in this room who has gone through it first year, first quarter of law school, I know you all remember how incredibly hectic it is. It's just a whole new world. And I'm still here because I believe the law should protect things that should be protected. And I want to be a part of that activist work from the get-go, so I can better serve as an attorney when I get that opportunity and privilege. And thank you for your time.
I don't see any additional hands raised, but in case somebody was waiting, I'll give you a second call. Does anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, I declare public comment closed. We now move to the consent agenda, Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of September seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. B, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. C, approval of the claims vouchers in the amount of three million, three hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty-five cents for the period of August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one through September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. D, approval of payroll checks in the amount of two million, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-four cents for the period of August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one through September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. E, motion number two thousand and twenty-one dash sixty-three, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the contract for services with Pierce County regarding road, traffic, and traffic signal maintenance services. F, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, lodging tax advisory committee meeting minutes of September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. Two, Lakewood Arts Commission meeting minutes of March first, two thousand and twenty-one. Three, Lakewood Arts Commission Public Art Subcommittee meeting minutes of March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Lakewood Arts Commission Public Art Subcommittee meeting minutes of March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. Five, Lakewood Arts Commission Public Art Subcommittee meeting minutes of March twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Six, Lakewood Arts Commission Public Art Subcommittee meeting minutes of March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. Seven, Lakewood Arts Commission Public Art Subcommittee meeting minutes of March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. Eight, Lakewood Arts Commission meeting minutes of April fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. Nine, Lakewood Arts Commission meeting minutes of May third, two thousand and twenty-one. Ten, Lakewood Arts Commission meeting minutes of June seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Eleven, landmarks inherited advisory board meeting minutes of August twenty-sixth, twenty-one.
Thank you. Is there any item which any member of the council wishes to have removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
So may I move that we accept the consent agenda?
Okay.
It's been moved by Ms. Moss, seconded by Ms. Farmer, that we adopt the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Long favor please signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay. The motion carries. Now move to unfinished businesses. Are there any unfinished business to come before the council?
There is none, Mayor.
About new business? Any new business to come forth, council?
There is none, Mayor.
Then we move back to reports by the city manager, Mr. Caulfield.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Like to start off with three updates that we'd like to provide you. First is, I'd like to call upon our Assistant Police Chief John Unfred to provide an update regarding our emergency management coalition and inviting the town of Silicon to join us along with University Place, Lakewood, and West Pierce Fire and Rescue. That will be followed by our Parks and Recreation Director, Mary Dawsworth, who would like to give you an update on our youth programs here in Lakewood. And then she'd also like to give you an update on a proposed interlocal agreement with Pierce College to build a baseball field at Fort Silicon Park in conjunction with the city's endeavor to add turf infields out there later this year, actually, probably more like early two thousand and twenty-two. And this would be for the design element of that project. So with that, I'd first like to call upon our Assistant Police Chief, John Unfred.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Thank you for allowing me to come in. As you recall, back in twenty nineteen, you approved an ILA forming the West Pierce Emergency Management Coalition, which was a partnership between University Place, Lakewood, and West Pierce Fire. It took effect January twenty twenty. Since then, we've had some discussions with the town of Silicon, and they have agreed to join the coalition. And so before you, the ILA, bring them in, the ILA is very similar to what's in place currently. It's the same funding structure determining the fees that each jurisdiction pays. That is based on everyone contributing their annual EMPG or Emergency Management Preparedness Grant funds that they receive from the state. And so I will mention in my memo, there was a typo, and I apologize for that. It will be the actual cost that is for two thousand and twenty-two. And then obviously, this, if adopted, would start on January first, two thousand and twenty-two, or is it not, two thousand and twenty-one? Silicon is, as you know, is very small population-wise, so their amount of EMPG funding and their contribution is fairly minimal. However, on the flip side of that, is the additional work would be fairly minimal. The benefits of the whole West Pierce EM Coalition is that we consolidate in our plans so that they're more efficient. We're not creating the same plans. FEMA outlines what plans that we have to have, and now we can do one together. And so adding Silicon in there is going to be less work for everyone. But it's going to also give us the ability to increase to, we currently have a point three three part-time emergency management assistant. That was added when we formed the EM Coalition. That will now bump up to a point five. And so that's going to give us more time that he can help us out with our emergency management work. So the cost increased to us is between zero to five thousand dollars a year. We don't really know because the EMPG funding fluctuates. It's a federal grant, gets passed to the state, and then down to emergency management agencies. And it's also a population-based formula. So particularly now with the new census coming out and our population going up, that should increase slightly the amount of EMPG funds that we receive next year. So if any, it will be a very minimal cost. It also makes sense from an emergency management standpoint in that Silicon is really the last island within the West Pierce Service District. And obviously bordered between Peachtree Town and JBLM and us. And to be honest, you know, we're their their first mutual aid response anyways in an emergency. So a lot of good benefits and minimal to zero cost to us, and it just helps build that partnership across the region with our neighbor in Silicon. Be happy to take any questions.
Questions for Chief Unfred. Mr. Whalen?
Just a quick one, Chief. Thank you. I think it makes perfect sense to do this. My comment dovetails on your comments about the population estimates on page. I think it's one-on-one of our packet. My only comment there is, if this is going to be effective January one, the more accurate we can make it, the better. We may end up paying slightly more, but I would like us to be consistent with our population numbers as we're using them through different city documents. And I think we're at sixty-three thousand, three hundred and something. So I'm sure the other cities have increased a bit as well with the twenty-twenty census. So, you know, not a huge deal, but I'm just all for consistency as best we can.
Sure, absolutely.
Anyone else? Thank you, Chief. I just note that just fairly randomly this weekend, I I got a live feed from Emmitsburg of the fortieth annual firefighter memorial ceremony in the middle of the complex there that we visited for training a few years ago. So it was kind of strange to see that happen.
Yeah.
Right, Mr. Caulfield?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, AC. And so this item is going to come forward for council consideration as part of your next regular meeting.
And so this item is going to come forward for council consideration as part of your next regular meeting on, on October eighteenth and. Chief, did the town of Silicon, have they already approved it on their end?
Yes, they have.
So, so again, it'll be coming forward to this body for your review and consideration on, in two weeks as part of your eighteen October meeting. Next up, I'd like to call upon our Parks and Recreation and Community Services Director, Mary Dawsworth. She would like to give you an update again on two items. The first being, the city, what the city does is in regards to youth programs here in town. As well as an update on a, our second ILA, if you will, with Pierce College regarding the turf infield. So with that, Ms. Dawsworth.
Thank you, City Manager, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Nice to see you this evening. I'm Mary Dawsworth, Parks and Recreation Community Services Director. Council had. Council had requested a summary of youth programs available in Lakewood. And since incorporation, our cities made youth and families a high priority for the city. That's absolutely evident in the amount of resources that the city dedicates to supporting the programs, services and agencies that support youth here. When the city started embarking into the world of Parks and Recreation, we determined that a comprehensive system of services was needed for our community to support youth. However, no one real, not one agency has enough resources to do it all. So the cities worked really hard not to duplicate services that are being done by other agencies. Unless there's capacity or need for additional services. And because Lakewood is such a collaborative community, and we all know that, we spent a lot of time fostering relationships and partnerships to ensure that there's a good system of services to serve the many needs that we have. Throughout the community. Sometimes the city is the actual direct provider. Sometimes we're a partner. Sometimes we're just the conduit for putting partners together or acting maybe as a clearinghouse for information. But regardless, there are lots of programs and activities for youth in Lakewood. And if you refer to the chart, it starts on page one hundred and ten in your packet. You can see that we put together quite a comprehensive list. And I tried to lay it out in a manner that would be really easy to follow. Of course, the agencies noted the types of programs, and this is today, or maybe it was last week when I put this together. But it could be different tomorrow. Some programs are steady and strong and have been going on in the city for. Twenty-five years since incorporation. Others are based on current need, trend, special opportunities, so. It, it does change, you know, it's, it's ever employing, which is what Parks and Recreation does, but it's really all about serving the needs of the community. So many of these programs are low or no cost. They all have sliding scales typically to support our particular community and their needs. The third column, city funded or supported. I mean, we could have put X's on every single one of these because the city does support so many. Agencies in so many ways, but we really tried to kind of focus it on those that we either financially support. Or that we seriously partner with, where maybe we're providing facilities or providing services or we're providing some kind of additional support. But I did also at the end, put together a list of park improvements because all those, that's not necessarily a direct. Program for you, you know, the improvements that you have supported over the years. Have really made a difference for families and for kids and for youth in our community, giving them a safe place to go, safe place to visit, to recreate and do some of the activities that are listed by some of these partners. Or just to spend some time on their own, enjoying nature, so. I'd be happy to answer any of your questions or provide additional information as you need, so.
Questions from Ms. Dawsworth. Mr. Whalen.
Thanks, Mary. Appreciate it. Very comprehensive, as always. My. Question for you, if you know, we had talked over the last few weeks when there was some public comment about. The existing, you know, indoor facilities through which students and youth can activity or. Participate in activities and the question came up about the. YMCA, and I know that the late night program had its fits and starts. Do you know if it's still ongoing?
My understanding is yes, it is. I know COVID and I didn't refer to that. COVID. Added some new programs, took away some programs, delayed some programs, but my understanding is this, that that program is ongoing. I can clarify that for you. I didn't verify that specifically.
And, and the other thing from my prior life as a member of the advisory board there at the Y for a number of years. It was my understanding at the time that there were. There was a policy that no youth who wanted to access the Y would be turned away or declined on the basis of affordability. And is, is that still the case?
Absolutely. They provide, specifically for the late night program, they would provide access to kids that weren't members. So that anybody in the community could come to that program. They do have sliding fee scales and other resources to support youth so that they can participate in whatever way that might be. As an individual or sometimes as a family, so that is absolutely true.
So it, it may be, again, you know, it's always potentially a communication issue more and better is the. Word of the day, right? So to the extent we can perhaps partner. In our communication to the community about opportunities that are available, including. You know, the issues with regard to financial assistance, so that people know that there aren't barriers to participation if they truly want to at places, for example, like the Y. I know the Boys and Girls Clubs likely has, has limits on the numbers of people they can take in a given afternoon. So there might be a little bit more of a. Numbers game there as opposed to a financial one, but I, I believe they truly also accept students of whatever. Financial means they have.
Yeah, I think if the Boys and Girls Club, they'll let someone join for fifteen dollars a year. And that's offset by other resources and, you know, all of our service clubs support so many of those different. Organizations in various ways, whether it's financial support or even programmatic support. Scholarships for sports activities, things like that. Yeah, and one of the things that the city manager had noted and was is that this list, now that it's kind of here. Is a way of posting this, getting this on our website, maybe with links to these different agencies, so it's really easy for anybody looking for. Services that they can, that they, you know, click on and then follow up with whatever they need is, whether it's activity or, or financial support.
That's a fantastic idea with the hyperlinks to the organizations themselves and. Whatever information that people can avail themselves to determine whether their child can participate and at what cost. That'd be great. Thanks.
So I think you just stole my thunder. I was going to say no good deed. And the no good deed goes unpunished category, this matrix is so comprehensive that I think all it needs is. Links to contacts for the various organizations, so if people could go one place on the city website, say Youth Resources and. They could, if they had the inclination, drill through them or, or search out potential activities for. Members of their family or themselves, so.
We will work on that.
Any other questions for Ms. Dawsworth? Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Ms. Dawsworth. Again, it's, it, this is a comprehensive list and I was, you know. Glad to see it. And then as you also remarked, it's as comprehensive as it is, it's probably not. Totally complete. There are, there are things going on that we don't always know, but I had. Two things that the city had been. Highly involved with pre-COVID. That, that are on the list and I was wondering whether. That's because they've been evaluated and they were not going to resume them post-COVID. And, and one was the, the, the youth fishing event that historically was at. American Lake Park, but with the. With the. Improvements at Harry Todd, I suppose it could be done there as, as. As well or in, in, in lieu of to do that. And, 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 and the other was the math relay that the city staff usually put on that. Didn't happen was when we didn't have in-school students, but always seemed to be. An event that generated some excitement for the, the, the elementary age school that, that did that. And. And then I guess I, one other thing was. The list didn't actually include. Any events at. Hoover Park Technical College or Pierce College. Which. Are engaged with young people, both the running start population and students just beginning that, you know. Their post-secondary work, but that, that, that fall in the youth category. And it would be interesting to look at what they would, would be able to do as you. Work to further. Refine the list and then. Figure out how it can be communicated with the public. But. And I, I, and the other thing is that, that I guess that I would like to, be nice if the youth council would look at this. For gaps.
Good idea.
If something they'd really like to have been on this list that they don't. Don't see, I'm not. I don't have the, the, the insight to, to do that that they would. Thank you.
Those are great comments and also suggestions. I think giving it to the youth council to review. Is great and we'll make a plan to do that and provide some feedback from them on maybe things that they're doing that we don't know about or if they're seeing a big gap. I also like the idea, I didn't really focus on Pierce College and Hoover Park Technical College, but with Pierce College, you know, we've used their. Laserium room. I'm sure there's an observation room before and we are partnering with them next year on some projects, so. Including some of the things that they do, those are great and we can add to this list. That's the great part about a matrix. You can always add a couple of things, especially as we start looking to post them. Regarding the fishing event, yes, it is coming back. It was delayed based on fish and wildlife wasn't allowing them to curb during COVID. Or having their staff participate, so we do plan on coming back in a little different way next year. We have received that grant that is going to allow us to do several environmental education and, and environmental activities. And one of them will be the fishing event and we haven't determined yet if we're going to do that. Do that back at American Lake, if it's going to be ready or if we're going to be under construction or something happening. Then we'll absolutely take a look at Harry Todd because of course now it's ADA accessible. And we can incorporate other things besides just the youth programs, maybe a VA program, wounded warrior program. Or now that we're looking at partnering with. Pierce County and Metro Parks is maybe even having one session really focused on children with disabilities. Whether they're sensory disabilities or mobility disabilities, but it would be another way of taking one of those sessions and really focusing it on some special needs in our community. So we're working on that and that'll be a twenty twenty two program. The math relay, yeah, that was a lot of fun, a lot of work, but really a great way to get kids to practice their. Math skills, adding, subtracting, et cetera, so. It's not on our agenda right now, but that's something that we'll take a look at and see how we can put that back in once the kids are ready to get back and play. Thank you.
Any other questions? And back to you, Mr. Caulfield.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Dawsworth still has the floor. She has another item she'd like to report out to you.
Thank you. Starting on page one hundred and fourteen, we have the staff report that talks about the city's intent to begin the design phase. Of the infield project at Fort Silicon Park. As you know, we're installing the four synthetic turf fields at our, at our four main fields there. And also we're working on building a home field for Pierce College Raiders baseball program. The city approved an ILA with Pierce County, or pardon me, Pierce College in January. To ensure that we're all on agreement and moving in the right direction. And now we're ready to add an addendum to this to ensure that each agency understands what their financial contribution will be for this design phase. And so once we put together the scope of work, we determine who was going to pay for what. And we wanted to utilize a percentage system mostly because there's different areas. Some of them. Are a hundred percent on Pierce College. The city wouldn't have any involvement in paying for these services. There's other services that would be a twenty-five seventy-five because there's four fields and. We would do three of them and the college would do one of them. And then, of course, in some just general design work, getting cost estimates, we determined there is going to be a lot more work in certain areas. Regarding a home field than just doing the turf. So we tried to lay that out really fairly. The colleges in. Agreement with that. And then the great thing is that if something comes up in the field, a new. Need for a permit or activity or something that we hadn't determined yet, we can utilize this percentage in this layout to determine, you know, who, what the effect is for each agency, so. We're happy with the way that that's laid out. So you have in your packet the. A copy of the amendment, which is pretty short and sweet to the point. We are very comprehensive in the original ILA, so I can refer back to that if anybody has any questions on that. And then we also put in a good summary of the scope of work. We're going to be bringing forward the contract for the consultant who will be doing the work, DA Hogan. Really well known in the field. They have, that's pretty much all they do is turf fields and they have done collegiate fields as well, so they're really going to be a great fit for this project. So we'll be bringing those both back to you on October eighteenth. If there's no questions or you, or you're fine with the direction, we'd love to have them on the consent agenda to make life easier for all of us, but if you have questions or need more information, we're happy to. To, to gather that for you.
Mr. Bulkey.
Thanks, Mayor. Mary, when I'm looking at this, I see the alternate bids. And. I think there's three alternate bids and the one that is throwing me a bit bid is alternate bid number two. About the outfield. Is that something that would comply with our master plan for the park?
Sure, and it's really just the home field outfield and that is kind of a dreamer. Just since we're doing all the design work to get the cost, we're not looking at doing that in our fields. It would be for the home field for Pierce College. And. If they could gather the resources that they need, that would be, you know, a great. Asset for that facility, but again, we're not going to build something we can't afford, so we're just going to be taking it with the, with the cost estimates would be to be able to do that.
Okay, so it's not part of this. They're just going to do the design work or whatever, but it's not our money involved in that.
No, a hundred percent of the, the home field costs are going to be Pierce College related costs.
So how about the, would you still play soccer on all these?
Not the home field. That's going to have to be fenced off because of all the improvements that'll be in there, but we'll still be able to overlay soccer fields as we've done in the past. That's why we're doing grass outfield and that way we'll be able to still do the overlay for soccer. As you know, every year soccer changes because we sometimes use three full size. Three full-sized fields and several modified fields. And it really is dependent on what their registration is and we work with the site and the soccer club. To determine where all those right places are. And then, of course, wear and tear, we have to move things around as well because sometime, everybody wants to practice and play in the goal. They get torn up and so sometimes we have to switch the fields to go the opposite direction or we move them to other locations, but that's how we manage the turf out there.
That's right. You got to move everybody around. So would they rent this out or would we still rent it out to other baseball teams like for tournaments and whatnot?
We would own and manage the facility, so they wouldn't use it for practice and for their games and if they were to sponsor a host of tournaments, but we will have access to it for our. Leagues that we contract with, our tournaments. And we would be the one leasing it. We would generate the revenue from it.
So how much should they use it? Is it for softball too?
No, your softball team plays up in Chal. They have a facility up in Chal that they utilize. It'll be strictly set up for a baseball. And I don't have, I, I think I put that in the original. When we did the ILA in January, I think, I, I think they start playing. Late January, February, and then they played through May-ish, so they would have priority after school, so to speak. Monday to Friday when they're not playing games, they play one to two games a week. For eight weeks in the late spring, so I can get that schedule for you if you're interested, but. When they're not using it, like if they're not using it on a Sunday, we could use it for tournaments, like a baseball club can use it for their home field or their. You know, it's really nice when you do a tournament to have your championship game on a really nice facility and so we'd be able to, to schedule that.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Whalen.
I, I think she answered my question. It was with the improvements. I wondered what strings came attached, but. strings came attached, but subject to the ILA that we reviewed previously, we own it, we contracted out as need be. They get to use it. Who maintains it? Is the budget on us?
Yeah, you'll have following, when we get to the end of the design phase, there'll be another amendment to the ILA that'll probably talk about construction. And at that point, we might be ready to do everything regarding maintenance, operations, management, use, signage, et cetera. But that'll be a few down the road. They may maintain their own field during their season and that we would just make sure that they have the right equipment and they would, of course, treat it properly. So we would work those out, but they may do some of their own maintenance. And we've not normally allowed that for the groups because you can do a lot of damage to a field if you're not maintaining it properly. And I hope you guys all remember back in the day that they used to drive their pickup trucks out there and get an old piece of fence and they'd stick some bricks on it and drag it around. That was probably Mr. Cuffield's day of dragging fields. But they can do a lot of damage to a field. So we don't normally let our user groups do that, but for this particular purpose we make.
So but there's no fixed number of days or entitled to because they're participating in this construction expense, right?
We'll we'll work through that based on their season and their needs. There there could be some details regarding maybe opportunities to run a tournament or something like that. And, you know, some limitations, but we haven't worked to that. We do have some examples from other organizations that have done these kinds of user agreements. And so we'll take a look at that and make sure that it's fair to them and also fair to the city.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Dodsworth, I've never been to a Raiders baseball game. Do they charge admission?
You know, I don't think they do, but I'll check on that for you.
I I guess if 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 they do, we should figure out how how that contributes to the maintenance of the field and or covered one way or another in the next ILA. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Well, thank you, Mary. Anything else from you, John?
Yes, Mayor, I have several things I'd like to report on and like to ask Ms. Dodsworth to hold on on this on this first item. So I think, as you're all aware, your Parks and Recreation Advisory Board last week, they held a public hearing regarding the renaming of Fort Silicon Park to Dr. Claudia Thomas Park. And that was submitted by a local resident, Mr. David Boyd. So the Park Board unanimously voted to not rename Fort Silicon Park. However, in recognition of her local government leadership, you know, locally here in Lakewood as the Lakewood Bay Area and as a member of the council, as well as regionally and even statewide, the board did recommend that the city council should consider, you know, perhaps naming something here on City Hall, the Lakewood City Hall or the Plaza area or something after Dr. Thomas. Now, there is a challenge with that. From, you know, the first of all, you know, based on the process that the council has put in place, the PRAB held a public hearing only on the renaming of Fort Silicon Park. They did not include as part of the public hearing considering renaming a city facility or an ancillary part of the facility. So the PRAB would need to go back and hold a public hearing on on that particular request. We are going to follow up with Mr. Boyd. He did submit an amended application in June of this year where he did three things. One is he removed his original request to name Motor Ave as the Dr. Claudia Thomas Promenade. And he made us his priority in renaming Fort Silicon Park, which is what PRAB held a public hearing on. However, he also included that this request also offers Lakewood City Hall as an appropriate site for memorializing Dr. Thomas's name. It too is a community gathering site for its many boards, commissions and the city council. So we plan on following up with Mr. Boyd to see if that's something he in fact wishes to do. We understand the answer to that is yes. But again, following the proper protocol as outlined in your adopted resolution, PRAB would need to hold a standalone public public hearing on that. So that's kind of where we stand on that particular issue. And Ms. Dodsworth, if you had anything to add there, certainly welcome your input.
I would just say that I thought that, you know, this was the first time we did this process on behalf of the city council. And so I thought that it went pretty well. We received a lot of good feedback and I was really thankful. Everybody was quite respectful about Dr. Thomas and her commitment and leadership to the community. And Mr. Boyd did a really great job of sharing. One of the things the park board wanted is whoever the applicant applicant was to share for them to present their application so that they could hear from the individual and not just from a staff level. And so I thought he did an amazing job in carrying on the application, even though he was aware of all of the public input, he had seen the staff report. So he was part of the loop on that. And then he his presentation regarding wanting to see her recognized in some fashion for her, you know, contribution to our community from a leadership, a municipal leadership perspective, I think is what generated the follow-up from the park board to look at naming City Hall or a portion thereof. There was feedback that City Hall is always going to be City Hall. And so when you rename something, you know, maybe then that that the applause or the council chairman or something else. And so we could pursue that further, but that wasn't really the point of the meeting that was really about. And most of the energy was about Fort Silicon Park.
So one thing I wanted to bring council's attention on this, I was going to wait till the council comments, but when we adopted this policy by recollection was one of the things that we were most concerned about was or a focal point of it was how long there should be between somebody's death and the time when something could be named after them. And to set up some a process. But it appears that one potential, irrespective of the merits of this request or the next one, one potential problem is while we specify there needs to be broad public support, evidently one person making one request can put the process in into motion. There's no threshold. So everybody you know, could put one in a day asking that their grandfather has something named after them. And while I don't expect that to happen, I I think we should consider some threshold like a petition with X number of registered voters on it. And I'm not suggesting any, you know, like a recall petition or anything, but just something where there has to be a showing of public support, which in this case, I'm sure Mr. Boyd could meet that threshold. Whether or not his request was granted, you could get, you know, X number of people to say, we'd like something named after Claudia Thomas. And then you consider all the merits, but we could be inadvertently engulfed in any number of requests if all it takes is one person raising the issue. So I'd like to, if if the council concurs, I'd like to consider or have a discussion on that, I should say, in the near future. Ms. Farmer.
I agree. I think that sounds like a good thing to bring up. I was just trying to trying to figure out if there was a workaround to all this process, all this process. I very much appreciate a good process. It's usually very thorough and easy to follow and you understand where you need to go to get to the end. But I thought I understood that the council at some point could initiate a process and maybe maybe I misunderstood. It has to come from outside. It has to come from a resident or or a stakeholder. The 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 city council cannot initiate a naming process. Is that correct?
No, council member of the city council, you know, the city council, the mayor and the council can initiate a renaming process.
Okay, so what I'd like to propose is that instead of going back to Mr. Boyd and because I heard him clearly, I'm the liaison to the Parks Board. So he's like, yeah, great. You know, let's let's talk about another another area. So I'm I'm wondering if we couldn't collaborate on this or I don't I don't know what our path forward is, but I'd hate to have to go back and put all the onus on on Mr. Boyd to to move this forward.
Mr. Branstadter.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you know, I I agree with your your comments that applications that come from outside the city for the the naming of a of a building or a location should include some indication in the application of the public support for the proposal. And with 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 some way of being able to go and do that. And I think we could look at and doing that. You know, this is the first time we've run through this process. So I think, you know, it's a it's a good time to review how it worked and to ask the park board how they thought it worked from their perspective and ideas that they could do. And and I do think that if we are looking to names initiate something as a city that that's a different process than the one that's done by this particular resolution to be able to go through and do that. So I think we have a recommendation coming to us from the Parks Board that we as a council consider identifying something in the City Hall or in the within the vicinity of the City Hall to to name. And and we should at some point in time share our thoughts about how we want to deal with that recommendation. And I think that this will be a chance for us to sort of decide on our own internal process as to how we're going to want to look to go. And it's and the process needs to include not just consideration of how do we rename things, but how do we name new things? That you know, if we had been been thinking about it and we look at the the legacy plan, for instance, there are a number of capital projects in the legacy plan that will be built over the years. And there ought to be a process to consider how they should be named rather than just the Fishing Pier or the Pavilion or whatever. I was also though liked the fact that the process got a lot of public participation. And even even if it was public participation of in the let's not do that. Many of the comments that were made spoke both highly of Dr. Thomas, but they also really spoke well about the importance and the legacy of Fort Silicon Park to the community and parts of the community to do that. So I think we we gain that from this process, even if it didn't lead to a recommendation to approve Mr. Boyd's request.
I give it to you.
Mr. Wayland.
Thank you. I just want to thank you, Mary, for going through the process. I listened in on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board Zoom meeting that you guys had. So it was good to hear the process unfold. I would just add to the chorus that we look to revise our process and the ordinance to provide some sort of threshold of public support before we just go through the naming process. Otherwise, I'm sure there'll be after my death, thousands of applications coming through, you know, you guys will be stuck with, all by my family, of course. But in terms of whatever Mr. Boyd might be thinking or doing, you know, we've talked a little bit colloquially here that, you know, if anything that we might do as a council initiated process or naming process, you know, the Colonial Plaza has drawn a little bit of interesting commentary over the course of time. Claudia would be tickled pink if we were to consider that Unity Plaza at Colonial Center because she was all about unity and community. You could do a cool plaque there about her contributions and she would probably, you know, I'm not going to speak for her. She's not here. But I know that she would probably be honored by the fact that we attributed the Unity Plaza at Colonial Center or just some sort of focus on unity there for any number of good reasons. And that really was her heart. And I think it would honor her if that was something we would like to do or think about doing to start a council manic process in that direction.
Anyone else? So we'll
So Mayor's I'm sorry, Mayor. I didn't mean to interrupt. My bad. No, you go. You're the mayor.
I cede the floor to Mr. Cuffield.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, what I'm hearing from consensus from the council is to take a look at your existing resolution regarding the naming and renaming of city facilities to address two things. The first is the issue of what is the definition of broad support as far as some kind of a threshold. And then secondly, to further memorialize the specific process or steps that this body could take in regarding naming or renaming city facilities. And by the way, the reason my answer earlier to Councilmember Farmer was absolutely you can do it is because I know in the code, there is no place that prohibits you from doing it. So hence, you can do it. Secondly, I would define the city council as, you know, the owner's rep, if you will, of all the city's assets. So it is in well within your authority to do that. But again, Mayor, unless there's any further feedback or comment there, we can go back and take a look at that and bring that back to you. We'll try and get it back to you before the end of the year.
I think that encapsulates what I heard. Ms. Farmer?
I wanted to jump in on the deputy mayor's conversation about renaming Colonial Plaza, Unity Plaza at Colonial Center or some variation on that. That's actually been on my mind lately and I was trying to figure out if I should bring it up and so that if it sounds like we should get our process figured out first and then I would love to bring that forward.
Unless there's any unless there's any objection, Mayor and council, would it be okay while we're going through the the process, if you will, because, you know, specific Northwest and it's all about process? Is there any objection on a parallel track if we reach out to Mr. Boyd regarding the feedback from Councilmember Farmer and Deputy Mayor Wayland regarding that one idea? And there could be others that Mr. Boyd might have as well.
Yeah, I I would, I'm not a process person, so I would appreciate a parallel track. And I I concur that that's a good idea. There may be a very other very good ideas out there. But certainly something I think we should consider.
Thank you. A few more a few more items. And again, I'd like to thank Ms. Dodsworth for facilitating this whole lack of process with PRAB. It was our first time through and want to recognize her and her team. I thought, again, echoed Deputy Mayor Wayland Wayland's comment. Her and her team did an outstanding job and our thanks to PRAB as well, since they don't regularly hold official public hearings, but they did a very, very nice job. Also, and Mayor, I apologize if I'm stealing your thunder here. But as you know, as part of this, we received a letter from the Nisqually Indian Tribe expressing their concerns of renaming Fort Silicon Park. And as a follow-up to that, the mayor and I are going to be meeting with tribal leadership here later this week. And we have been invited to meet with the chair of their board, Willie Frank, Willie Frank's the third, as well as one of their board members, Hanford McLeod. And then I also believe they're the CEO of the Nisqually Tribe, Peter and Sarah. Also, you know, we have a very close working relationship with the Nisqually front, with the Nisqually Tribe on a number of fronts. For example, in our role with SSMCP, working with them to obtain the funding to deal with the blockage of the Boeing of Nisqually River and the impact that that's having on the delta and its environment and on the fish and all of that. But but even locally, Ms. Dodsworth and her team have been working very closely with the Nisqually Tribe. And this is a follow up to the joint meeting that this body had with the tribal board about three years ago or so. And just a couple of examples are, you all know, Hanford McLeod, one of their tribal council members. He's in the process of creating benches and seating areas that were going to be, it's going to be added to the new plaza at Fort Silicon Park. He's also working with an artist to have some native words and sayings and things like that incorporated into the benches. Again, to to recognize the Nisqually Tribe and the fact that this is their their ancestral homeland. Also, Ms. Dodsworth is working with the tribe's Archives Director to coordinating on wording and photos and other acknowledgement displays that will be placed at different places down on Fort Silicon Park. So those are just a couple of examples. And we're hoping that that those displays and those benches and and the like will be in place by the end of the year, if not the early part of 2022. So just wanted to communicate that and and pass that pass that on to you.
Mr. Coffield. While while we're on that subject, you did steal my thunder, but there's a little bit of rumbling left in the background.
Left you something, Mayor.
You left me something. So when the CEO, in in conjunction with the Chairman of the Tribe, Willie Frank, the third's objection to changing the name of of Fort Silicon Park. The CEO reached out to me. I know him for a couple of prior lives. And one of the things he kind of revived, I think, is a discussion about having an interpretive center at Fort Silicon Park with respect to the Nisqually history and culture and the Chief Leshai. This is something that the lodging tax allocations potentially available for. It's something that the Nisqually Tribe may contribute to. It's something that approached the County Executive and said he would re-support a request on the part of the county to use LTAC money for that purpose. And we have Mr. Wayland so ably reminded me a major construction capital campaign going on with respect to the barns. And this would, if it's done on the scale that I would envision, would need to be endorsed. So it could be essentially an anchor tenant of a barn reconstruction and have funding from not just the community fundraising efforts, but from LTAC money and from two jurisdictions and the tribe if we could reach some common vision. So I wanted to bring that up to the council tonight because as City Manager said, we're going to be meeting with tribal leadership later this week and want to explore that, not commit to anything, but explore that and see if as long as council thinks it's something that's worth exploring. So there we are. Mr. Wayland.
Well, I'll speak to that since we chatted a little bit. You know, I think this is a incredible opportunity for a win-win if the tribe is inclined to assist us in really featuring culture and the incredible history they have here in this area. You know, we've we've got the opportunity at our steady hand with regard to the barn renovation project. And you know, it's obviously yet to be fleshed out, but there's really no reason why we couldn't plan a small interpretive wing inside a portion of that facility that would really be a year-round draw. And it would be something to pride, not just for the Nisqually Tribe, but for all of us. And getting a a lead sort of seat gift, if that would be something they would be inclined to do would be great for the project. And I think along with lodging tax, we could start closing in on that initial funding need. And then the community, I think, would would probably step up and help fill the rest of it. So it really could be a great opportunity for win-win. I highly support the efforts in that regard.
Mr. Bulkey.
Thanks, Mayor. If it's within a current building envelope, I think it's something we could definitely take a look at, especially if it's part of the capital campaign. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be crazy about it with putting another structure up. And I don't know that that's where they want to go or not, but you know, it yeah, it sounds like, I mean, we're lining up dollars for it, but there's no plan. So I want to be really careful as to what we're talking about. I mean, is it is it along the lines that the deputy mayor is talking about? Or is it something more grand? And if it's something more grand, it might not, Fort Silicon Park, I mean, keep in mind, there I mean, we just had a discussion about putting turf fields in at the park. I mean, there there is a constituency that likes the natural nature of it. And so we need to be need to be very careful in in honoring the the natural beauty of the park and not just keep, you know, when someone comes up with a suggestion deciding that we want to build something. So let's be very, you know, I'm I'm okay with going forward, but we need to be very thoughtful about it.
Yeah. Not that I I would think it's anybody's number one choice, but Deputy Mayor Wayland also reminded me that we have a vacant concrete slab out there that used to be a barn. Already impervious surface. Mr. Brad Satter.
Well, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I I I'm certainly in doing something in consult with the tribe to recognize the the history and interpretive type project seems good and LTAC funding seems to be available. I I would say that my, I would like Mr. Bulkey, my my preference would perhaps to be something that is somewhat open air, which would provide access to great many more people than say, something that's inside a venue that is primarily going to be available to people that rent it. And and I I guess I need some clarification in case I wasn't listening. I thought we were still in a in a phase regarding the barn that was feasibility and that we hadn't moved into a capital campaign. But am I just behind on on that?
Mr. Coffield.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Brandstetter. So they're they're in the process of developing the feasibility to initiate a capital campaign, and they hope to be able to present that to the City Council later this year or the early part of 2022.
Okay, so we're not in the midst of a capital campaign at
No, sir. No, council member.
Yeah. And 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 Mr. Mayor, one other thing that is the the tribe is looking to do something on the heritage and and art side that the design that we approved for the Colonial Plaza has all those little windows in it that you can put certain small things in and perhaps the the tribe could provide some design with the artists for some number of those as well.
All right. I cut you off, Mr. Coffield.
No, Mayor. Thank you. It's a good discussion. So so actually, this one's going to involve some interaction from the council as well, Mayor. So as you know, the Lakewood Community Foundation, each year they facilitate the recognition of somebody or a group in the community for the Larry Saunders Service Award. And they have received a number of nominees. And within LCFF, the Lakewood Community Foundation Fund, they actually have a separate committee that reviews all of them and then makes the decision on who's going to be recognized to their full to their full board. Each year, this body actually identifies somebody to sit on that committee. The committee is comprised of three people, a member of the Lakewood City Council, and this year will also include Todd Wolf, who is president of the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce Board, and and Linquist, who is in a leadership role with LCFF. I think the last couple of years, it's been Councilmember Bulkey who has represented this body, but they are looking for an individual from this body to serve on that committee. And if you're so inclined this evening, if you can let us know or sometime in the near future, if anybody has an interest in 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 doing that, and we will communicate that to LCFF. The it it requires one meeting. That's it. One meeting that's held sometime in November. And then LCFF will then bring forward the recognized party or parties as part of your, one of your, one of your first meetings in January of 2022 is typically when the when the recognition is 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 done for the public at a council meeting.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I I did it last year. I'll I will do it again, but I will tell you who anybody else who wants to volunteer. It was pretty easy. I mean, we got the the applications or the nomination forms is the right way to put it, the nomination forms via email. And then you read them prior to the meeting. And then the meeting itself, we did over Zoom, I think, and it went pretty, pretty darn quick, really. I kind of, we coalesced around the eventual winner fairly fairly quickly. And so it was, so it's, it didn't take. I don't think the meeting went an hour, to be honest. So just so you guys know, if any one of you wants to volunteer.
One of the caveats and serving on the committee is you cannot publicly disclose who the winner is because that's a big surprise in January.
Yeah. Anybody interested in succeeding, Mr. Bulkey?
When are the meetings?
There's one meeting, just one.
That's what they say, Councilmember Bell. Well, that's what they, that's what they say.
I would be happy to volunteer.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Bell. We will we will let them know and either we'll be in touch with your, I'm sure, or they will be in touch with you directly.
You know, that's, that's an old military trick. You step forward, volunteer for the easy one.
That's right.
Fewer meetings.
What can I say?
Next is Pierce County Regional Council.
So just so I can wrap up and get out in front of you, get away from you here this evening, council, so you can get on to council comments. I know you really value my city manager reports here every 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 other week. So this one is for situational awareness at this point in time. We were approached on Thursday by the by the school district. So they are looking at hiring a mental health counselor to rotate in their schools to reach out to kids who are having having some issues and concerns, particularly in the area of of suicide and things like that. And so they're looking to move pretty quickly on this. The reason that they've involved the city is they would like to get financial assistance from the city in terms of accessing some of our ARPA dollars. And this is something that your Community Services Advisory Board, I understand, is going to be considering here in the near near future. And most likely could be a recommendation when they come forward to meet with you in early November as part of your November 8th study session. But the other reason I'm bringing it forward to your attention is that the school district might want to, I think, believes, I believe, wants to move forward sooner rather than later and getting this position on board to help those in need. So I could well be back in front of you either next week or the week after requesting the council to allocate a portion of ARPA funds that you've actually already allocated as part of the 1% funding. That's the that's the area that the funds would come from. The total ask from the school district is $34,000. They would match it dollar for dollar, and then they would develop a job description and things along those lines. But again, this happened late on Thursday, and so I'm just giving you a heads up that there's likely more to follow either for me or certainly from your CSA, CSAB board in 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 early November. I think everybody's aware of the sewer main broke, the sewer main that broke this past July on Silicon Boulevard. Pierce County Sewers is moving forward with permanent improvements along Silicon Boulevard, that short stretch between Bradley Lake Drive and Lakewood Drive. And they're hoping to be able to begin that work either the latter part of October, but because of some supply chain issues, perhaps not until the early part of 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 November. Now, that's the good news. The not so good news is that that it's going to take them two months to do that work. They have to dig very, very deep to pull out the existing main that's down there that's broken and then replace it with a new one, which means that stretch of roadway will be closed similar to what it was earlier this summer. And then there were detours in place to facilitate the flow of traffic. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that that's likely coming probably in the early part of November, then would be shut down for two months while they undertake undertake the the construction there. Also, unfortunately, we heard from Congresswoman Strickland's office last week that the essentially, the 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 community project funds that Congress had been allocated as part of the Invest Act are not moving forward, which means that our $2.4 million request for the construction of South Tacoma Way, really the last segment from 80th to 88th is 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 not included. And at this point in time, we will not be getting be getting funding for that. However, that's not to say that for the next budget cycle, that's not going to come back because it's likely is. So at least the good news is that we have an application ready and standing by. Also, we now have this application ready and standing by to submit for future PSRC federal transportation funds when that cycle comes up. Actually, next year as as well. Right now, design work is actually underway, and we're using PSRC monies there. But certainly, we appreciate the Congresswoman's leadership and support of our project there. And she also noted that anything that she can do in helping the city get other federal grants or state grants that she and her office would be more than willing to 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 assist there. Another transportation project is right at the northeast north, the north northeast part of the city, Lakewood Drive from 74th or Custer, north up to 56 on Lakewood Drive that eventually turns into Orchard. This is a joint project between the city of Lakewood, Tacoma, and University Place, since we all own a small portion of that roadway. The city of Tacoma is actually going to take the lead in the project. And we expect to bring forward an ILA for council's review and consideration to begin the design work on that, the conceptual design work. The city of Lakewood's portion for that will be $8,500, so not a large amount. And the intent is, once we, once we get the design completed, that then we can pursue either state, for example, TIB monies or some future PSRC funding as part of the next cycle in 2022. Both of those agencies would look very, very favorably on this project because it touches three agencies. Actually, it touches four. There's a small portion of unincorporated Pierce County. However, the city of Tacoma is in the process of annexing that part of the roadway. So in the end, it'll be three municipalities. The work in Lakewood that would get done is the intersection at Lakewood Drive and Custer, where it turns into also 74th. That whole intersection would be rebuilt, including mast arms. And then moving north on Lakewood Drive, that small segment of 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 Lakewood, curbs, gutters, and sidewalk. But the majority of the work would then be in University Place and the city of Tacoma. So again, just wanted to give you a heads up that there'll be an ILA coming forward for council review and consideration if you wish to participate in 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 this partnership. And then lastly, just wanted to point out this weekend, a lot happening in Lakewood, of course. First and foremost, on Saturday is Truck and Tractor Day at Fort Silicon Park from noon to 3:00 PM. And then also all weekend, beginning on Friday and Saturday and Sunday is the annual annual film, art, and book fest at the McGabik Center and a number of great things happening there. So with that, that's my report, Mayor.
Any questions for the city manager? Mr. Brad Satter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Caulfield, on the Silicon Boulevard work, uh, regarding the sewer line. Um, that sewer line is down quite a ways under the roadway, uh, and I'm assuming that that section also has water mains and probably gas. Um, are those utilities, uh, going to look to take advantage to, to upgrade or do anything with their infrastructure?
Councilmember Brandstetter, um, right now, Pierce County Sewers is focusing on this, the, the, the sewer main. Um, the city's not aware of any other utilities that need to do, do any, any work in the ground there. Um, and you're right, that sewer main is deep. Um, I think at its deepest point, it's over thirty feet.
Yeah, I guess, because I would just say if the, if the work is going to go down that, that deep, uh, there's, there's some potential to be close to what the other utilities have. But all, depending upon what, what the status of their, their, uh, their infrastructure is, I don't know how, how aged it is.
Yeah, their, their, their focus is, is, because the sewer main actually runs down pretty much center line of the roadway. And, um, typically, the water and the gas mains actually are supposed to be off to the side and not down the middle like that. Um, but that's just the way they were built. Um, but their intent is to, you know, really just focus on trenching to get to the sewer main. I mean, that's, that's the plans that we've seen so far.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gwaelen was next, eh?
Thanks, uh, Mr. Caulfield. Just a quick question on the Clover Park School District's ask on the mental health monies. That was what, thirty-four thou that they were looking for, is that right?
Affirmative, Deputy Mayor Wayland.
And that doesn't necessarily have to come from our one percent. It could come from the general pot if we were so inclined to allocate it.
Um, it could, Deputy Mayor.
Okay, thanks.
Um, however, uh, CSAB is looking at the, the, the ARPA one percent monies.
Well, I know they are, but i- is this on their radar yet? Because it just gave you.
It is, it is. Yeah, we're in the pro, we've, we reached out, we're in the process of reaching out to them, Deputy Mayor.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Bulky.
Actually, I'm sorry. I, I, I would just add to the point where, you know, we want to have some conversations with the school district to the point where CSAB may need to have a special meeting like this week to address it.
Okay.
So, so my question is along those lines. I, I looked at our, at the bottom of page six of our last study session, and they, the CSAB recommends allocating half of the one percent allocation to Lakewood Thieves Workforce Development Initiative, and then half towards youth mental health. So that's, uh, is that what they're, but this is, they, they did this before the school district asked.
That's correct, Councilmember Bokey, but they didn't, it wasn't a specific, it was youth mental health, but at the time, they didn't really have an idea of where it would go, and now the school district has come in and said, hey, we have an opportunity with this mental health counselor, which came in on Thursday. That's correct, Councilmember Bokey.
So did they receive money? Or they're in the process of receiving additional money, or they're just putting some money up? The, they got some ARPA money and they're putting towards it?
We, we do not have that information yet, Councilmember Bokey.
Okay, and, and we don't know that they have an expectation beyond next year or anything like that, or this.
That is a, that is a question, um, we, we are going to have for them, Councilmember Bokey.
Okay, and, and remember, the county's also, and we're part of it, and we're all paying into that one-tenth of one percent for behavioral health, and that's that's going to get dealt with here in the budget very soon, and, uh, I mean, we have recommendations from the, um, well, actually, we're waiting on recommendations from the, uh, from the board, so we'll see how that goes and how that fits in, because they may actually end up with more resources, perhaps. I'll just, I'm just throwing that out there. And also, I'd like, I'd like to comment on, I think it's great, the, the cooperation we're doing with with Tacoma and University Place on that stretcher road. It, it really is, there's a lot of people that live along there. There's a number of multi-housing uh, family projects in there. Um, Tacoma is, is going to, uh, take over that island here very soon. Um, unless something untoward happens. And so I think it would be, uh, behoove all of us because of the level of traffic that goes through there and various things. I, I think that's a good move, and I'm, I'm glad we're cooperating on that. So, thank you.
Um, I would just add, uh, Councilmember Bokey, um, the one-tenth of one percent funding is, um, something we'd like to try and help the school district access as well, particularly for ongoing funding source purposes.
Anything else? Any other questions for Mr. Caulfield? Then we'll go to council comments. Ms. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm just really looking forward to the events that are happening in Lakewood this weekend, and I hope to make it there amongst all my other many things. So, great to support the city.
Ms. Farmer.
At the risk of being taken out of context, I wanted to thank city staff for revising the public comment section of the website to provide clarity on how public comment works, which we really do want, trust me. Uh, whether we're in person, we're online, or in a hybrid environment, that's what we're looking for. We're looking for that clarity to make sure that, that we're not stumbling around and that we, uh, were able to get right to the comment and, uh, and make sure that everybody has their say. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Bulky. Yeah, I would, I would second those comments, uh, from Councilmember Farmer, that we do, in fact, want public comment, and we have had for years a dearth of public comment, so it's actually nice to get, uh, public comment, but I think some of the things that we said got a little bit, yeah, a little bit twisted. Um, just in, yeah, so I'm, I'm glad we're working on those, and um, I don't know that I'm crazy about sitting in my study all night and not being in person, but I, you know, I've adjusted, so, for now. And how long are we going to experiment with this, just for a month? Is that the plan? Oh, is, we go back? Okay, okay, thanks. Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and thank you guys for, uh, going along with the virtue. I feel a little more comfortable for now. Things are getting better, so we're going to be able to go back hopefully soon. I would just wanted to, uh, let you know that I did attend the civic leadership receptionist on Tuesday hosted by New Base Commander Colonel David Frazenbaker. It felt good to reconnect with the military again. Uh, good networking opportunities. Um, I met the new district representative for, Representative Kilmer. Her name was Courtney Akoff, A-C-O-F-L. Um, very friendly, open person, one that I think that we'll get to know more about, because she's interested in Lakewood and what's going on. Uh, and Colonel Frazenbaker is looking forward to more events. I also had the, uh, opportunity to attend the Lakewood Chamber ribbon cutting on Friday, along with Councilmember Brandstetter, where I had an opportunity to welcome the new pro, the new business to Lakewood. Her name is Alita Hankins, and she bought the, the Allstate Insurance Company right there on Gravel Lake Drive. The address was ninety-one twenty-six Gravel Lake Drive. And it was well attended, a lot of good foods and door prizes, and someone amongst us won one of the jewel prizes. So, it was a lot of fun. It was good to get back, uh, connected with the community, and, uh, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Brandstetter.
Yes, Mayor, uh, on, uh, on Wednesday, I'm planning on, uh, the, a- a- attending the Assumption of Command, uh, for Major General Brunson, uh, of First Corps. And, um, I'm looking, looking forward to, uh, Truck and Tractor Day.
Mr. Wayland.
Uh, thank you. On Tuesday, I attended the North Lakewood Neighborhood Association meeting. Uh, at the meeting was a presentation by our state rep, Dan Bernoski, chatting with the neighbors about their concerns over the Western State Hospital issues and, uh, general graffiti issues. There's an owner down there at the old bird mill property on the other side of the Silicon sort of bridge that goes across the creek there, and she had some ongoing concerns about knucklehead activity and graffiti and garbage and improper camping by folks who should not be there. So, I forward that on to, uh, Mr. Caulfield, and hopefully we can take a look at that for her. I, I know that CRT has been out there, I think, previously, so it's just an ongoing challenge. On, uh, Thursday, I had the, uh, opportunity to spend four hours on a Pierce Transit Study Session, so that was a nice long afternoon, and reviewed their status of the Bus Rapid Transit corridor project that goes to through Spanaway. So it's, uh, one of those that they're very anxious about completing the work, the design work to get to sixty percent design so that they can stay qualified for federal funding, which is critical to the viability of the project. So more to follow on that, but, uh, they're working hard. Um, and then what else is going on here? This week, we've got, uh, Planning Commission meeting, that's on Wednesday. I'm not going to go to that, but the Arts Commission does have a retreat on Thursday, so I will poke my head in the door on that. There's a, a very vibrant group of people there that are doing good things, so as they unfold their work in the community with regard to the upcoming art project, continue to applaud and support their efforts, please. That would be great. And then, I think that's it. I'm going to go to Truck and Tractor on Saturday, and then later that evening, I'm going to, uh, uh, take a little flight where I'm going to go to a time zone that's about eight to twelve hours different. So I'm going to miss a couple of meetings, at least physically, but since we're not in person, I will do my best, Mr. uh, Caulfield, to attend virtually, but I'm just putting it out there that I may be out at least one or two of those meetings.
Uh, so, uh, like, uh, Ms. Moss, I attended the Sixty-second Air Wing reception, uh, that, or her, uh, her comments that it's nice to, uh, get back, uh, together, uh, in that regard. Um, I had, also had the opportunity last week to have a virtual meeting with the, uh, new, uh, CEO of, uh, Pierce Transit, Mike Griffin, who's not new to Pierce Transit, uh, who had wanted to essentially get my thoughts on Pierce Transit initiatives as a mayor and longtime, uh, member of the board, and, and my pitch, as it has been, uh, kind of a one-note uh, band is, uh, BRT two through Lakewood. There's planning money coming and, uh, making sure that they at least plan it out to Main Gate, even if you don't build it out to Main Gate. Uh, there's been some, I think, in the past, irrational resistance, uh, to that. Uh, well, it does generate money for us, but if you've got that many people, uh, a mass transit route needs to run out there at some time in the future. Um, I, on Friday, I attended the, uh, Taste of Korea, uh, and twenty-fifth anniversary of Washington State's, uh, sister state slash province arrangement with, uh, Jong, I, I will get it wrong, uh, province in Korea. Uh, it was at Silicon, uh, uh, Town Hall, it was, uh, very well presented, uh, both, both the, the food and, uh, the entertainment. It was sponsored by the Korean Women's Association and the Council General of Korea. Um, Wednesday, like Mr. Brandstetter, I am going to attend, uh, Major General Xavier Brunson's Assumption of the Command. He's been acting First Corps commander. Uh, in all likelihood, my best guess, he's going to get his third star that day, because it has been approved by Congress, and uh, he needs to be in the three-star billet officially, uh, to put the star on, so, uh, that, that should be, uh, a, a rather significant day for him. Uh, and we have that, this quality meeting coming up on the same day, on Wednesday. Uh, like Mr. uh, Wayland, I'm going to get on an airplane, but I'm not going nearly as far. Uh, but I will miss it, well, I'm not sure I will miss next week's meeting. I may be home in time. I'm flying back on Monday. Uh, so if, uh, uh, we'll, we'll see how the, uh, the airline's treating this. I think I'm supposed to arrive at SeaTac at five eleven, which means I should get here back at home about seven o'clock. But I'll try to make the meeting, but maybe absent.
Let, let me know, because I might be able to chime in on that if need be. It'll only be about four o'clock in the morning, but I'll, I'll do the best I can.
Done that a couple times, just.
Actually, Mayor, Mayor, if I might interject real quick, if for some reason either you or the deputy mayor are not available, then who, who do you wish, who from council will serve as the chair?
Uh, I don't know who has done it, hasn't done it. Oh, I'll see it, it, to Mr. Bulky, and then.
If the two of us aren't there, yeah.
But, uh, I, I think, I, I think I'll make it, but, uh, just in case. Uh, is there anything further called to come before council? And we're, thank you for your attendance and participation. We're adjourned.